Previous city council meetings, members of the public have made racist comments. Comments have disrupted presentations that were made during the public comment period. Council condones such language and opposes it. Comments are deeply harmful and are entirely incon- While it is not possible to prevent harmful speech during public comments, council will continue to condemn. Right. The agenda addition changes.
Yeah, so we're gonna move the executive session six, uh, five G up to five D.
In the, like, the tax sale policy, tax sale policy. Move that from, no, five H. Neat, there's nothing else, right? Is there anything else? I don't think so. So I'll move, we approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
Great, all those in favor say aye.
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 Motion passes unanimously. Public to be heard, this is the portion of the meeting where members of the public can bring comments or concerns to the board on items that are on the agenda and items that are, or topics that are not on the agenda. So is there anyone on Zoom right now that wishes to make any comments or bring anything to the board's attention? Please raise your hand using the raise hand feature at the bottom of your screen. Not seeing anyone on Zoom, but we will come back and check in a minute. Is there anyone in the room? Bridgette, your hand was up first. Come on up, you know the drill.
I do.
Please identify yourself and-
I do. I'm Bridgette Meyer, I live on Pleasant Street. This is a teeny tiny little thing, but it's driving me crazy, so I thought I'd bring it up. I sent Ashley an email about it and she said people were aware of it. The, I don't know what to call it, it's a sign and it's on the corner of Railroad and Main Street. It's a green thingy and it's got, used to have a clock in it. It's now derelict, no clock, papers flapping in the wind, and I know appearance isn't maybe even anything, but it's something, you know, and for that to be there for so long with just, I don't know what's going on. So I made three suggestions to Ashley, which I will repeat here. The first one is take it down. It's, uh, non-functional, there's no reason to have it. That, I mean, I'm not advising that, I'm saying that's an option. The other would be to have the, if any of you remember the painting by Peter Huntoun that we used for our independence celebration, enlarge that, put it under Plexiglas on one side. The library has a great photograph of Essex Junction at the turn of the twentieth century that we could enlarge and put on the other side and then say, and fix the clock and reinstall it, and Bob's your uncle. You know, then it has a, you know, it's a function, it's relatively attractive, and it's, it's there. I, I, I know this is, again, this is a teeny tiny thing, but it's just, I pass it every day, drives me nuts. So, you know, I, I, I really hope that we can do something about this. Whatever we do, I think will be pretty low cost, although I don't know about the, the, um, the, um, clock, I don't know anything about it, it's not there. Maybe Regina knows more, but I'm sure Regina knows more, but, um, but yeah, so let's do something about that. And I'm happy, by the way, to take any of this on, you know, any of it. So just let me know if there's something I can do. And, um, but again, if it's not going to be functional, I think the original purpose was to put municipal meeting notices there, which was, you know, I mean, you know, I just never thought it was much anyway, but we either make it something or we take it down. That's, that's my personal.
Thank you.
Yeah.
John O'Brien, resident of the city. I just wanted to take a moment to compliment y'all. Actually, a couple days ago on Front Porch Forum, there's a wonderful summary of the last month's meetings that Tim put forward, and I just found it really engaging, really thoughtful, really comprehensive, and I just really appreciate seeing that level of engagement. And I think in, in the current climate, in the, in the country and here, people really like to see that level of outreach, and it really just pulls back the curtain, brings people in, and I find it so vital. So I just wanted to say, I, I look forward to seeing those in the future.
Great, thank you. And thanks, and Ashley.
Amber for bringing it forward and Ashley for contributing, everyone else that had a hand in it.
It's awesome.
It's good, I have had a lot of positive feedback from it, so.
It's, um, you actually started it, so. There we are.
Is there anyone else online that has anything last chance? If not, we will move on to business item 5A, Vermont Bond Bank presentation.
Yes. So Ken is joining us here. Ken, I'm happy to share your slides for you, or I made you a host if you want to share your slides yourselves, whichever you prefer.
Um, I don't know, let me, uh, let me see here. Why don't you go ahead and share them, and I'll just, I'll just like walk through them. So I, I think my screen will brighten up as I, as time goes by. I'm Ken Lingy, I'm the loan officer at the Vermont Bond Bank. Thank you for, for inviting me to, to speak tonight. I have a lot here in this deck that I shared, and so I obviously don't have, you know, tons of time, so not going to be able to go through all of the, all of the items in a detailed way, but figured I'd, you know, kind of hit some highlights and kind of talk about, you know, generally speaking, what's in the deck and, you know, what the financial benchmark assessment sort of is and isn't, and sort of what are some of the kind of things that it, that it says about, you know, Essex Junction's current position and what, you know, debt capacity, you know, some things to keep in mind as you think about debt capacity. If you want to take on a bond to, to fix the sign and the clock, for instance, you know, could you do a $10 million sign and clock or maybe just a couple million? Anyway, the, uh, this, this first page here, it just meant to give an overview of, of bond bank programs. We're probably best known for our pooled loan program, that's the, um, the, the program that's been in place for 50 years, kind of our bread and butter. We have about $600 million in loans outstanding across the state in this program. It's, you know, the program we, we, um, uh, use to access the bond market twice a year and then take bond proceeds and distribute them to municipalities and school districts and other governmental units around the state to fund infrastructure projects of all kinds. We're also the financial administrators of the SRF program, the state revolving fund program for water, wastewater and stormwater, and we, you know, conduct that, that program in partnership with DEC, and they do the sort of the prioritization and the, and the sort of the engineering oversight stuff, and, and we manage the, the financial side of it and make the loans. And that, that relates to, I'm going to talk about not just governmental activities, debt capacity, but also water, wastewater and sanitation fund debt capacity. And, you know, those, those enterprises could go through the pooled loan program or the SRF program for debt. I, I think you both know, know about both of those, have used both of those programs in the past, so. And then we're, we're increasingly developing new and different programs for, to meet different kinds of needs. Some of you may know that we stood up a flood recovery loan program this, this past year to help towns carry the cost of short-term debt while awaiting FEMA reimbursement for some of the, the emergency response this past year. We did that in, in partnership with the State Treasurers Office, and then we're, we've been exploring and hopefully will have soon, some, some, some energy, energy project programs that, that use federal funds to capitalize loan funds at, that, that, that make, you know, low interest subsidized loans for, for energy, energy projects. So, uh, and then, like I'm doing now, we, we help towns with, with understanding things like debt capacity and, and capital planning. And next slide, please. So here's some advantages and considerations for the pooled loan program, I'm not going to go into these in depth, but generally speaking, it, it creates a, an economy of scale and, you know, brings costs down for borrowers, both because it leverages our, our AA plus, AA two rating, and because it's risk and, and, and cost. So, next slide, please. Like I said, we're, you know, we're, we're leveraging federal funds. We hope to have a, a, a loan in place, a zero interest loan in place from USDA in the next few weeks, that, that would, you know, that, that would be a $40 million loan that would really enable a lot of energy, energy loans, it probably in the neighborhood of 2%. So keep an ear to the ground about that, that program, it should be, we should have some announcement about it in the next couple of months, probably. Next, next slide, please.
Can I interrupt you and ask a question about that?
Yeah, sure.
Is that okay throughout this, if we do that?
Yeah, that's fine.
Try to keep it to a minimum. Uh, my name's Raj, I'm one of the counselors, thanks for joining us.
Yeah, sure.
Would those energy loans include, include things, like what, what kinds of things would those include? And I don't mean to derail you, but are we talking like charting?
Yeah, that's why I sort of bring all this stuff up in case it's particular items that are, that are interesting and we can go into more depth on them. So there, there are, we're, we're developing two, two programs right now, two distinct programs that are, that are using two different sources of, of, of capital, two, two different federal programs. The first one that's going to be available is through the USDA RUS Rural Utility Service RESP program, Rural Energy Savings Program, and that's sort of, that's pretty broad. That, that makes, that, that will enable us to make loans for any, any projects that reduce energy costs or, and/or improve energy efficiency. So, you know, that could be, that could be a real wide variety of things. And then the, after that, at some point, hard to know exactly when, in the months ahead, we're likely to be able to tap into the EPA's Greenhouse Gas Reduction Fund Funding Stream. That will, the piece of that that is going to be most useful to us is mostly, is mostly going to be for schools, I think, in the, in the foreseeable future. As you, if you have familiarity with our programs, they're not, not slow, they're not, they're not quick to, to provide guidance and, 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 and issue funding, so it's, it's been a slow process, we're, we're learning as we're going, but the RESP program is pretty broad. Fuel efficiency, energy savings, projects of all kinds. The one catch on that right now is that until the farm bill, the farm bill may change this when it gets revised, but those loans are restricted to 10-year terms, which makes, makes it tough to make some, some, some energy savings projects pencil. It's not impossible, especially if we're able to, and we think we are, able to make loans at the 2%, in the 2% neighborhood, but, yeah.
To dive in a little bit deeper on, on that note, and hi, I'm Marcus, by the way. The question that I have in, in using this, these bonds, for a program like USDA RESP, is that strictly for public projects, including public buildings, or it, could it be, for instance, us developing a weatherization program for residents here in our community and, and being able to use those funds in order to help our residents, you know, redevelop their properties or, you know, improve their properties as such?
The, the, the funds coming through, like USDA and EPA have, uh, do, are, you know, are making funds available for, for private sector and for individual residences through those programs, but we, we aren't able to make loans to, to the private sector, to private residents. You know, we, we strictly make loans to, to governmental units, so that wouldn't come through us, but like VITA, for instance, is also, is also tracking these programs and developing programs with those funds. So like on the, in the private sector side, VITA is going to be probably the, um, doing some things with these funds that would, that would meet some of those needs, I would think. Yeah, sure. Okay. So I'm, okay, in the interest of time, I might, might skip through here, but you know, it's all, all to say that anybody, anytime anybody has any questions about, you know, what debt service might be like through the pooled loan program on, you know, a 20-year, a 20-year loan for, you know, for, you know, $3.75 million or whatever issued in, you know, March of 2026 with two years of the principal, whatever the parameters might be, I'm happy to send a schedule, I can do that anytime. So, you know, rates, rates just reflect whatever, you know, the, the bond market will bear. Right now, you know, don't quote me on this, but you know, just to give you a sense of ballpark, I'd say, you know, a 10-year, 10-year loans through the pooled loan program are pricing around, um, 3 and 1/4%, 20-year loans on the 3 and 3/4% ballpark, and, you know, 30-year loans on the, on the 4, 4 and 1/4% ballpark. So, um, okay, next slide, please. Is, this is the timeline for the pooled loan program, we, we go to market twice a year and basically accept applications, or applications are due in December for the winter pool and in, in May for the summer pool, and then funds are available, we say on or around August 1st for the summer pool and on or around March 1st for the winter pool. Okay. You know, talk to us anytime, if you have a project in the works, you know, we'll, we'll work with you on, on timeline to make sure that everything is getting taken care of in an appropriately timely way. So, these next several slides are the, the, the financial benchmark assessment. I've done one for governmental activities, and then for each of the enterprise funds, like I said, water, wastewater and sanitation fund. They're, they do an analysis of operating ratios, debt ratios, and then provide some, some analysis. And so, you know, we, we basically follow the, the same sort of Moody's methodology, sort of standard national methodology for assessing municipal credit, and we look at, look at these, these ratios and compare them to benchmarks and compare them to what, you know, other similar municipalities are, are, you know, what, what, what the benchmarks are, what the medians are among similar municipalities around the country and within the state. So we compare, like in this case, that last audit column are, you know, your ratios from the end of fiscal year '23, so about a year ago, and then the next column is, is the medians that we've calculated, we look at, you know, most of the municipalities around the state and, and, and monitor and, and, and develop these medians from, from that data, and then we look at, at Moody's medians as they're available to us and compare them. All right, let's skip through to the next one.
Can I ask a quick question, please?
Yeah.
My name's Elaine Haney. Can you just explain how in the last audit column, for example, we have cash as a percentage of revenue of 161%?
Yeah. That's, that's not unusual because this looks at the general fund and cash is generally held on the general fund level. So, you know, Vermont is a little unusual in that regard, but, and, you know, cash fluctuates, right? So it's sort of, that could be a, that could be something that, you know, a couple of months difference might make a pretty big difference in regard to. So, you know, we look at a lot of ratios and there's not one thing that sort of tells the whole story. And, uh, yeah, but back to that point about, you know, because cash is held in the general fund and not in the water, wastewater or, you know, or other enterprise funds, it, it tends to make general funds, especially in larger towns like yours, maybe, that have these other enterprise funds, sort of seen cash heavy, if that makes sense?
I'm, I'm just trying to understand why it's not at 100%, but rather it's at 161%.
Just, it just compared, it's just cash, cash on hand compared to annual revenue. So, um, there's just more cash on hand in the general, in the general fund than, um, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So, let's go to the next slide. The next slide is, this is probably going to be, be more interesting and, and I might stop here for a minute, just because, then, I mean, don't go to the next slide, but on the next slide I have some sort of analyses for the governmental activities, but this slide is, presents in that last audit column, ratios as they're described there, and then on the two right, two columns on the far right are the benchmarks, the Vermont median and then the national Moody's medians. And then columns between, those are just imagining what, what the ratios would look like if you added $5 million, if you added $10 million, if you added $15 million to your, to your, to your long-term debt. And, you know, the, the, I'll, I'll describe these in the, on the next slide a little bit, but, you know, sort of specifically, but if you look here, you'll see that debt service as percentage of operating expenses, that second line, 3.4%, you know, that's, that's below the, the Vermont median, and it's, you know, well below the Moody's, Moody's median. And if you were to go to, if you were to add $5 million to your, to your debt load, you would, you know, you would exceed the, the Vermont median, but, you know, generally speaking, you know, I mean, comparing Essex Junction to, to, to the average Vermont town is, is only going to be so, is only, you know, tells you so much, right? You know, this is a, this is a, an imperfect process. There's, um, there's my last, the last slide has some disclosures on it about the sort of imperfections of benchmarking. We have to remember that at the end of the day, you know, an individual can go to a bank and ask for a loan, the bank can say, sort of, here's your number, right? Here's what you can, can borrow because your income is relatively fixed, but, you know, your, your income is, 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 is variable based on, you know, what your voters approve. And in a democracy, you have the, you know, the, the, the right as a community, as a municipality to, 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 to make the will of the voters, to, to realize the will of the voters and, and, and take on more debt. So, so we're not here to, to be an arbiter of, you know, you, you, you can't borrow beyond a certain amount, but you should be aware of, you know, how, how it compares, you know, what's, what's extreme relative to peers, what's more sort of in line with, with benchmarks. And, um, and yeah, you'll see here that, so, you know, you get to, to adding $15 million and your, you know, government, government activities, long-term debt as percent of revenue in the middle there, you know, creeps up to, to 232%, which, you know, compares, you know, which would, which would indicate relative to benchmarks, a relative, relatively high level of stress is how people would refer to it when, when thinking about, uh, uh, debt levels. And then, you know, looking, looking down further though, if you look at that second to the bottom row, you'll see it says government activities, long-term debt as percentage of equalized value. This is something that Vermont communities tend to, tend to, tend to be low in, tend to, tend to, we tend to not leverage our equalized value as much as some of our peers around the country, and so you'll see that Moody's median number, 1.6%, you know, indicates that there's quite a lot of, you know, there's, there's, there's more equalized value in the community that could be leveraged. So, so many different ways to look at debt and think about it, and they, you know, have different opinions about it. But so just to put it all out there, um, that's, these are the medians that we look at, the median that Moody's looks at, that are, that everybody should be thinking about. Next slide, please. So here, here's some of the takeaways, you know, strong cash position implies liquidity. Should expenses and or revenues differ significantly from projected, you know, that's resiliency, right? Government activities, long-term debt to value and long-term debt per cap are well below Vermont medians at the, at the moment. We, that's not always the case, sometimes folks come to us and it's like, well, your, your current debt levels are pretty high, that's not the case here. Um, uh, you know, as I, as I said, that, you know, adding new debt, especially greater than $5 million, does stress ratios, though not the government activities, long-term debt to value compared to Moody's, which is worth noting. Then the local economics, which I'm going to go into a little bit on the next slide, appear quite healthy, though municipal tax rate is, is a bit higher than the Vermont median. And I should note this too, quality capital planning and reserve fund management suggest capacity for effective, effectively scheduling projects and distributing the impact of new debt. Credit analysis is about ability and evaluating ability and willingness to pay, and, I mean, there, there's a lot about management in Essex Junction that signals to, to me anyway in my, in my evaluation that there's a lot of, you know, ability and willingness to, to, to cover debt service. Next, next slide. So local economic and social indicators, you can see here that the equalized value over the course of the past decade has, has grown at about, has increased at a, at the exact same rate as the, as the average Vermont town, which is kind of interesting. And population has grown by, you know, 1.34%, that's not been the case around the state. Household incomes are considerably higher than the, than the state average and are growing at a faster rate as well, growing at 6.91% versus the state's 5.21%, and the, you know, average household income is in Essex Junction is 86,000 as opposed to 66.9. Okay, next slide. And of course, that all factors into the ability to, you know, maybe realize, manage a higher debt load than maybe otherwise might be the case. So I'm going to go really quickly through these next, through these enterprise funds, this information is here, you have it. Again, like with the governmental activities, we look at operating ratios, and then we look at debt ratios, and then in each case I have a, a sort of a, a takeaway slide. So operating ratios, the water, water fund are, are pretty tight, you see that 92% ratio, that means that, you know, expenses, you know, operating expenses are 92% of, of, of revenues, and so, you know, doesn't leave a whole lot of margin for, for, for debt service. Then again, you know, the, the depreciation number, the remaining useful life of assets is high, suggests that the, the, you know, the, the, the assets are in good shape. Next, next slide, please. Water fund, this debt service coverage ratio is, is pretty high, it 1.32x, even though it looks low compared to the median, 1.25x is our, kind of our target, and so, you know, it's, there's, there's enough net, uh, net profit, net revenue to, to cover debt service and then some. And, uh, you know, debt service in general compared to budget expenses and revenues is relatively low there, it's 6.4, about 6% compared to like a 30% range. Next, next slide, please. So here's the sort of observations on the water fund. The way this is set up, you know, it looks at if nothing changes, expenses and revenues don't change, and you wanted to take on more debt, how much debt could you take on? In this case, that additional debt capacity line, assuming 20-year loan at 2%, which we use that because that's like an SRF ballpark, that, that would enable $236,000 of, of debt and $14,000 of annual debt service. You know, the, the 1.5x and 2.0 columns, you know, there's, there's not that, you know, there's no capacity if you want to target those coverage ratios, but, so observations there below are, you know, are, like I said, the operating margin is tight, debt service coverage ratio greater than 1.25x indicates, you know, immediate ability to, to take on debt. Debt service to budget and debt to revenues are well below Vermont medians. And again, I, I like, I like this, I want to bring back, come back to this line about quality capital planning and reserve fund management suggests capacity because it's, it matters, it's, it's, it's an important thing for those of us who review credit, and I hear this from the Moody's folks who, who review us, they, 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 they look for those of us who review credit. And I hear this from the Moody's folks who, who review us. They, 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 they look at this kind of stuff as well. Next slide, please. So, you know, I, I gave that, I went through that water fund, hopefully not too quickly, but to give you a sense of what, how to look at it. And you can do the same thing with the, with these wastewater and sanitation slides, maybe flip to the next one. And then the next one, so that I can just give you sort of some of my takeaways here on the wastewater fund here. You know, this operating margin is, is, is lower, I think it was like 60%. So this is, this is in line with Vermont medians for, on the wastewater side. And there are, you know, healthy reserves, healthy reserves to, to O and M and, and cash on hand. But to my point earlier about there being a lot of cash in the general fund, the way I look at this is, I use D2 as the, as the sort of proxy for cash because that's presumably what it is. And then so here, the debt service coverage ratio is less than 1.25 times. So to raise, to, to be able to, to, to take on debt service, the presumably rates would have to go up. Okay, next slide. Sanitation fund, you know, the sanitation fund, you know, I, I think it's probably no surprise to you that obviously lots of capacity here. There's, you know, unrestricted reserves to O and M, this 440%, like, days cash on hand is, you know, 1,400. There's a lot of ability here to take on debt. Next page. And there's the debt service coverage ratio. If you just go back one, you'll see it's like 3.82% or 3.82 times, which is, and these, the debt ratios, you know, that's just extremely low and, and debt service numbers to, to budget and debt to revenue are, 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 just more capacity. Next slide. So yeah, this is some of the points that I just made. Okay, next slide. Okay. And then this was just the points I, I, I made earlier about, you know, it's an imperfect process. We don't, financial benchmark assessment is information. It is not pre-approval. It is guidance, but it is not hard and fast rule about, about capacity or about, you know, it says maybe something about what you could borrow, but nothing about what you should borrow. That's, you know, that's, we're silent on that. That's, you know, those are community savings. Those are, and we exist to facilitate your access to affordable capital. And we also exist to, to protect the integrity of the program and to provide advice on, on, you know, in particular cases, when we look at the details about what might be, you know, more, more smart approaches to, to taking on debt. And I will say too, it's an important thing probably, once you decide, you know, we, we have all these projects we want to do, is, is thinking about, is capital planning, right? Because over time, it's kind of like, you, you can have a lot, a lot of stuff if you plan for it. If you, if you plan for it and schedule for it and find those places in your debt, you know, in your, in your debt schedules moving forward where you can, where you can build up reserves in some cases, or you can, or you can defer principal or whatever you have to do to make it work. But the, the, it's, the towns that plan get the things they want. Okay. So maybe I'll, maybe I'll stop there. The next slide, I think, just has our contact information on it. There are three of us at the bond bank. Michael Gona, our executive director, Elizabeth King, our controller, and then myself, and I, I do the credit analysis and, and help, help folks through the process of, of accessing capital. So, questions? Happy to answer now or in the future?
Well, I appreciate it, Ken. That was a really detailed and thorough presentation. I see Jess here. Jess, is there anything wanted to add or any comments that you had about?
No, I think, Ken, thank you very much for putting this together. It definitely was super helpful as we head into the FY26 budgeting process and talking about those pump stations. So I think this is really useful information to have.
Good. Yeah. And, you know, I'm always happy to have specific conversations about, you know, specific projects and I'm sorry, I'm seeing two, two screens. It's kind of freaking me out. And one of them is moving kind of weird. Anyway.
I know we, we reviewed this before the meeting and now that you, we've had your presentation, I think a bunch of people will go back and look again.
Yeah.
We'll have more questions passed through.
Great, great.
Very much appreciate your time.
That was your thing. Thanks for, for inviting me. I'm always happy to, to talk about this subject. And, you know, frankly, you know, we are you know, with, with all of the municipalities around the state as our, as our borrowers, we're really always excited when folks lean into this, this question about, about debt capacity and ask us, what, what should we be thinking about as we think about taking on, on more debt? And we want folks to, to be smart about it. So we appreciate that you're doing all this work. So.
Yeah, that conversation has definitely started a couple two terms of what the best way forward is. Is it cash spending? I also want to appreciate the, I think are great comments in terms comments about capital planning. A lot of time. Committee of people. Nice one. That gets a lot of, lot of thought.
Yeah, no, it's apparent when I look at your, your financials.
We also offer an opportunity for members of the public to ask questions of us, this topic. So if in the room have any questions or comments on this for the anyone online on Zoom, any questions or comments on this topic? Give a second. Seeing any point. So, Ken, thank you. All right, Regina, anything?
No. Super helpful. Lots to digest.
Yes, for sure. Well, thank you. Thank you very much.
Everything. My pleasure.
All right. Moving on, 5B discussion and consideration of the Tulaken renovation. I think we have Harlan with us.
Yep, we bet.
And we have John Oldman, who I'm going to make a guess is here for the stuff.
Yes. So Harlan will take this, but we've got a lot in this memo. So hopefully folks had a chance to review that. But yeah, take it away, Harlan.
All right. Yeah, I was going through the memo here and trying to prepare myself for the meeting. For those of you who don't know, I've, I just drove from Vermont from four o'clock this morning to North Carolina and a 14-hour drive. And I just got in at six o'clock. So I'm, I'm scrambling here with somebody else's computer and the wrong reading glasses.
They don't look like the ones we're used to seeing. I'm going to, I'm going to say that.
No, but, so. Yeah. The memo is quite long and has a lot of information in it. I'm just going to do some highlights. As a reminder that, you know, the goal of, of this entire memo is to try to get the building renovated to house and municipal offices for the newly formed city of Essex Junction. We acquired the architect, the engineer and staff. We've put it out to bid and we've hired Breadloaf Construction Corporation to be our construction manager. And we've been moving forward and we are at a point where we have 100% designs. We've put a lot of the work out to bid and Breadloaf has gotten back to us with this last estimate. And per our conversation in the, the last council meeting, when we brought this to you, that you wanted us to break some of the items out into different alternates. And they provided us with three alternates. And one thing that I'm noticing when we put this memo together is we didn't list alternate number one. As we were a little focused on trying to figure out how we could get through the process and make recommendations to you. Alternate one, I think you'll know if you've gone through the Breadloaf notes, was a vaulted ceiling that would be located in the lobby and it would be an aesthetic feature to try to keep some of the character of the age of the building. And I believe the total on alternate one was $38,900. And through discussions and trying to figure out how to fund this and make recommendations to the council for funding, we left alternate one out as a choice and we've included alternate two and alternate three. Alternate two being a vestibule and alternate three being some further improvements into the teen center spaces that we were going to be touching anyways in a little bit that we weren't.
Can I ask a quick question?
Absolutely.
Can you describe, because I don't remember ever asking this, without the vaulted ceiling in the vestibule?
Correct.
What is, is it going to be false ceiling? What's the?
It's, it's going to be a standard office ceiling, which would be the two-by-two suspended ceiling tiles. Very similar to what's in the, the office area now.
Okay. Try not to editorialize.
What's in, what's in the office area now, but won't be the office area after reno, correct?
Well, it'll, the the office area will still be the office area. It'll just be redesigned, relaid up the way that it is. But yes, it's a, it's a suspended ceiling with two-by-two textured tiles on it.
And, and the vaulted would be?
The vaulted would be wood slats. It would, it would have the contour. If you were to take a look at our building and our doorways, you will see where there is an, an archway. As a design on the, the entire building going through the doorways, that vaulted ceiling would be wood slats and it would mimic that archway.
Okay.
Throughout the, throughout the entire lobby.
Okay.
We're speaking about the main lobby area where, where Susan, Dan and Terry would be greeting the customers.
Okay, thanks.
Let me see. So we were going to be consulting with the architect team on Monday, which was beyond the time that we needed to get the information out to you. We did hold that meeting with the architect team. And our concern was our out-of-pocket estimate that we've given to you is, is pretty accurate with a, a lot of information that we went searching for. But we wanted to make sure that we weren't missing anything and we wanted to make sure that the architect team and their original estimate that they had given us to, to us back in, I'm pretty sure it was late in 2022, that we covered all of our bases for our out-of-pocket costs in there and that we still felt that those were accurate. We didn't want, we, we're trying to eliminate any more surprises than we can. So we held that meeting on Monday and we walked out of there feeling comfortable that the numbers that we presented to you tonight, to the best of our ability, are, are as close to accurate as can be at the moment. And then we are going to get into a lot of numbers down here. And this part of the memo, I would really love to turn over to either Jess or Regina to describe some of the areas of funding that we had found in our recommendation that we made to you on the project. If Jess or Regina would like to jump in here and go through that.
I'm happy to take it and Jess can correct me or add along the way if she would like. So essentially what you've got under here in the cost section of the memo describes sort of going down through so you can kind of think how this is working. The scope of the project, if we did not do any of the alternates at all, that's the two for, 2,400,000. We have estimated out-of-pocket costs, which are listed in your memo as well. So that is about $400,000. If you add in the two alternates, the vestibule, that's the 200,000 and the teen center improvements are about 90,000. With those two alternates, the project and the out-of-pocket costs, you get to 3.1 million. The available funds that are assigned to the Tulaken renovation project are 2.6. So that's about a 540,000 shortfall. So the recommendation to you here from staff is first, from the lot funds. So we have identified two FY24 lot fund assignments that we don't think are going to be necessary. One was associated with making up the half year for the full-time code enforcement officer, which did not happen and we're at the moment not planning for that. And 28,000 for stormwater grant match, which we don't need and we're fully covered for the matches that we anticipate both this fiscal year and within the stormwater FY25 budget. So we're, so we're good on that. Additionally, the FY24 budget has a conservative revenue production, projection for the lot. And so there's about $200,000 there that we're anticipating we will receive in the fourth quarter that hasn't been accommodated or assigned to anything in FY24. We won't know that precise number and what that is until August, but we're very confident that 200,000 is a, is a fairly conservative estimate of what that number would likely look like. So collectively from the lot, this, that adds up to about 325 and, oh, I'm sorry, there's a, an additional 84,000 in terms of the balance that's also there at the end of FY24. So assigning 325 from the lot to this project. We are still short when we do that. And so because as we were looking at this and we were looking at what we've assigned under the lot fund, we did not want to take anything that you assigned from the lot fund to the capital projects. And so that, we're not doing that, but we're sort of adding this as a, this 215 as a project to the capital list, which we can accommodate based on the reserve there. And you kind of see how those, those adjustments happen in that tiny, tiny table. Apologies for that in the memo. Jess, did I describe anything incorrectly?
Nope, you got it right.
All right. If there's, we can take questions on that or I can pass it back to Harlan to see if he, we had anything else he wants to add before we get back to that, which is.
No, I think that covers the memo and our recommendations. And obviously we've included a lot of information in the packet. So we'd like to open it up for discussion from the council and answer any questions you may have and kind of work this through and see if we can get to a point where the council is making a recommendation and potentially motions.
Okay. So Marcus is looking at me intently. Are there any? We always call Marcus first though, so.
I don't have to go first. I'm fine.
Do you have any questions?
I do have some basic questions.
No, it's good.
You want to go through the hand thing? Go for it.
Okay. Didn't we just have this conversation a couple meetings ago where we talked about what alternatives we should be keeping and what we shouldn't be keeping? And I'm just trying to understand why we're doing this again.
I don't believe we had final numbers on those alternates.
Is that the case? We just didn't have the numbers?
Yeah, we were, the, at the stage that we talked about at last, it was before the project itself actually goes to bid. Those preliminary estimates are based on 50% design construction as we, last we talked about it. So this is a, it's frustrating iterative process and, and back and forward. But so the, the direction was to call those out as alternates so that you could go ahead and do the project without those if you wanted to. And they're, because they are truly add alternates. You don't have to add. truly ad alternates, you, you don't have to add those if you don't want to. But you at least can see what they cost as individual items.
Okay, that's helpful.
And if, if I could answer that a little bit more, um, when we were in the last meeting, Elaine, we had brought you a list of, um, items that we kept cutting out of the project to try to get within the dollar amount, uh, that had been assigned to the project. And when we left that meeting, because some of the things that we had cut were, um, or at least the feeling I got from council were concerning that we were cutting some of those items and that you wanted us to bring this back to you in list forms and different options for you to make it easier. And then, and I also wanted to note that one of the items, um, that we had previously cut that I know was a big concern and, and thankfully it, it's, it gets built into the, the base project was our new heating system, heating and air conditioning systems. Originally, we cut the heat pump option out of those when they were rooftop units. When we moved those inside, um, to reduce costs, also when you, when you bring that equipment inside, we reduced costs that way. The heat pump portion of them then becomes very minimal because they're inside and they're protected, um, and it was only a few thousand dollars, and we felt like that wasn't worth cutting at this point, it was no real savings. But that's the reason that we're looking at these alternates, this is the way the council had asked us to bring them back to you, um, so that you could decide whether or not you would add them to the base project, um, or not.
Okay, that's helpful, thanks, Harlan.
You're welcome.
The only other question is, at some point in this decision process, or if we could just get a restatement of when it'll start, when it'll finish, what is the plan? Because I, I, I feel like I'm losing track of this project because this just keeps going that way.
There's a project schedule.
Right, but I'd like the public to hear.
I would, I can, I can absolutely put that out there at this point, that the schedule that we have in place now, providing no, um, or the simple version of that very decorative schedule that you have in hand, um, I could let you know what that is if you would like.
Sure.
Sure.
Um, as you know, we will be moving the municipal offices into the senior area of the white building, um, that will be happening on, uh, July eighth and tenth. Through some changes, as we were trying to put this together and get our final hundred percent CDs, we ran into some problems that we discovered in the building, which delayed some of our engineering drawings that we needed to get out, which changed our schedule, and our schedule is literally built around the elevator availability being ordered, when it'll be delivered, when we get it into the building. Unfortunately, our start date now is not going to be until, uh, the beginning of November, the first of November, um, but our finish date is still on target, um, for June of twenty twenty.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And just one, one note on that, um, part of that huge sort of lead time is nothing can really happen until we have a, a go-ahead, or if we don't have a go-ahead, then we don't have a go-ahead, but it's the elevator ordering process, um, that puts so much in between there.
To give you an example of what she's talking about, that elevator is so important and the timing of everything that we're trying to do, that if we left this meeting tonight with no decision and any delay, then that will delay the start of the project.
Understood.
I'm sorry, thank you.
Amber, Tim, Marcus? Amber, let me look at Zoom.
Don't see your hand up at the moment, but, Tim, did you want to go first?
Well, as, as the newest, uh, member here, I'm, I'm still trying to catch up, and Harlan, I had a conversation with you, uh, to get drawings on the shared drive, which turns out I don't have access to. So, uh, well, I worked through that, because it's just a user profile thing. The, the vestibule is a redesign of the entryways, people come in to the parking lot side so that they're not greeted by the broken concrete and pavers that have been assaulted by the salt over the years, and it redoes that entryway to make it a more traditional, more welcoming, inviting space. Right, so that's the two hundred and three thousand dollar alternate for that.
Can I, can I add a, a, a little bit of information as to other reasons?
Absolutely, please do.
So that vestibule does a few things for us, um, it creates obviously an air break going in and out, um, it does create an aesthetically pleasing, it also creates a protection area. I don't know if any of you have been through there in the winter, where we've had, uh, some snowfall issues, um, from the existing roof, the way that we're tucked into that corner there. So it, it serves a, an energy efficient, um, it serves, um, an ADA efficiency better, um, it serves, uh, a safety factor, and then lastly, it serves as, um, obviously a, a much more aesthetic entrance into, um...
Sure, right, yeah, and I just, like you said, I mean, I've been trying to catch up and do some homework and paying attention to previous meetings as they've happened, uh, but...
And we've had a lot of conversations, so it's very easy to not remember all the things that have been said about this building.
And then, so the, the alternate three becomes the teen center, and that's the kitchenette at seventeen thousand five hundred and eight dollars, and flooring at six thousand five hundred and ninety-two dollars, and then sixty, almost sixty-seven thousand dollars for mechanical zones.
Right. So what that, so, do you want a, a description of that? Is there a question?
Yeah, I would like to, I would, I would like to understand the mechanical zones more as, as we talk about spending money on space that...
Yep, so as you know, the...
...another nonprofit or another entity.
So, um, as, as you know, COVID has changed the world for us, and, and one of the things that we realize is air movement and fresh air into a building is critical, um, during, um, cold seasons and, and so on and so forth to keep a building healthy. Uh, the mechanical system right now, that building is only serviced by a boiler system, it transfers no air and moves no air, um, and there's no central, um, air conditioning, so we do a lot of damage to the building in putting in multiple, um, what we refer to as window shakers, but they are window-mounted air conditioning units. Very inefficient, lot of electricity. So the mechanical system will service that area, um, and some of the lobby and bathroom areas within the lobby area?
Okay, so it's not isolated to just the teen center, it's, so then...
Correct, it's not isolated to just the teen center.
That was going to lead into my next question, there was just a couple of mini splits installed on the outside, uh, of what will be the municipal office space once that's vacated, or once this area is vacated and the spaces move in to what was the senior center, and that provides air conditioning and airflow, and, and so I assume those units are going to stay and will service the senior center for years to come, uh, but that's not an option for upstairs?
No, because of the amount of space, um, a, as you saw, there, there are too many splits there at the moment, which are servicing just the open senior center.
Right.
To cover the area that we're talking about upstairs would require, um, several mini splits, um, and being a historic building, it would require a lot of ductwork either on the outside, or we'd have to tear into the walls to get that piping inside to get to those mechanical heads into those areas. Um, and we would have to find, obviously, if we wanted to keep the aesthetics of the historical building around the brick area, we'd have to try to find a way to creatively hide the units that are outside.
Sure, okay.
Because we did consider, we considered, mini splits were the first thing we considered when we first started talking about this building, and then when we found out the logistics of order would take to make that happen, um, it did not seem practical to try to utilize those for the area that we had to cover.
Again, I don't doubt that, I'm just trying to catch myself up a little bit, I'm sorry that it's at the expense of everyone's time.
No apologies.
And, and so then the last item becomes the kitchenette, which is seventeen thousand five hundred and eight dollars.
Yep.
And, and so as, I, I, the, those costs are associated with, uh, if I read proper, uh, refrigerator, that's to be furnished by the teen center, along with the stove, that's to be furnished by the teen center.
Correct.
And then so I'm wondering if they're providing the major appliances, the costs associated are a few cabinets and a sink, right, like that would be, and is that then the associated plumbing that goes in with the sink and all of that?
The associated plumbing, the associated electrical that goes in with that area to set that up is the kitchenette area, yes.
Okay. That gave me some stuff to chew on, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Sure.
So, I appreciate all the detail with the teen center. I think two things that I want to just acknowledge is, um, in the short term, this particular plan as it stands covers the current uses of this building. I personally don't think, though, this is necessarily going, this fits the best idea of what the long-term plan for this facility may be. Personally, I think that the teen center, and I think I even have to question whether the senior center is best located here at Two Lincoln for the, for the long term. We have upcoming a review of facilities with Parks and Rec, so I would hope that within that particular discussion and review, that we'll take a look and consider space for these kinds of programs and services, and because I, I don't know that, I don't believe that this is necessarily the, the best place for it. So I'm struggling a little bit with making investments in these particular areas that are very much specifically focused around its current use versus the long-term use. Whereas on the other side of it, in hearing the description of what the vestibule will be like without the add-on option, it's a little disappointing. And I, I say that not because anybody did anything wrong, that's not it at all, it's just a matter of, I think, again, thinking about Two Lincoln as the center of this community, representing this community, this building that we have said is going, is it, is the thing that is, is at the center of this community, I, and I totally understand this a, this is a big, this is a relatively big ticket item to create a vaulted ceiling, but for some reason, it feels like from an aesthetic standpoint and for the long term, it would better represent the community we're, we're creating. So I'm... I want to hear more thoughts around this and these two specific areas that I'm, I'm kind of going back and forth about, because I'm trying to consider, again, what the long-term play is versus just how we're using it today. And I think we're trying to do this renovation, we're trying to build this out for the long term. We've already sacrificed a couple things during this particular discussion, like we had the discussion about three-phase electric versus one phase, and yes, we can do one phase and one phase works and one, and it saved us a lot of money, I'm not saying that we should change that at all. But you know, we, in the long term, it would have probably been, it would have given us a lot more flexibility, it would have given us some other potential opportunities, again, way down the road, um, versus right now. So trying to balance out those, those thoughts and ideas, and I just want to acknowledge it, um, for further discussion.
I, I did fail to mention something a little earlier, um, around the vaulted ceiling. So the things that we need to know right off in order not to change our schedule were the two alternates that we elected to recommend to you, um, because of the mechanical information and because of the site work, uh, that needs to be done for the vestibule. So those things were something that definitely needed to be done. Now, we're holding a, uh, an owner's ten percent contingency, and then the construction company also holds a five percent contingency, and we really won't know how much of that we're going to be spending. We do expect to, to spend some of that contingency of, well, we weren't really expecting that, and we weren't really expecting that, but we're hoping that those are not big dollar items. The vaulted ceiling, we can make a decision as we go, if we find out that our contingencies aren't going to be affected very much, um, or if the council found another way of coming up with an additional almost thirty-nine thousand dollars, we could move to have that ceiling put in. We can't wait too long because it does change, uh, if I remember correctly, it does change some of the mechanical and electrical routing, um, but there is time, we could walk away tonight not adding that and still have the option to add it a little bit later. The other two items that we've recommended to council tonight to fund, um, do not have that options, that would change our schedule. And then I would also like to say that, um, I agree with you, looking at the future of the building, and, uh, that was definitely taken into consideration when Regina and Jess and I and, and some of the other staff talked, uh, what we saw the future of the city being, um, and we feel like we've done a pretty good job to put the building in a position of easy conversion if need be, um, or maybe no conversion at all. I think there's some extension in the way that it's been done right now, if needed.
Yeah, I think there's definitely things that, um, I mean, my cons, my concerns are of all things, you know, the AV being, um, deferred, um, but I think, you know, getting to some of what's been said, I, I think in kind of what Elaine was alluding to, a lot of these decisions I thought we made, we were just waiting for final numbers. So, you know, the idea of considering the, the vaulted ceiling and everything, I, I kind of feel like we gave guidance around what we wanted for the teen center space already, um, we definitely heard from the community that, and gave them a lease for a period of time, we're touching these areas, we should improve them, um, and I think, to your point about, you know, future considerations, um, taking the opportunity to adjust the HVAC now is probably a wise choice while we're doing all this work, regardless of whether we extend a lease once or twice after the current one for chips. I support this generally, um, and if we can get fair warning on the vaulted ceiling portion, um, with enough time to actually consider it and look for other funding before, you know, there's a drop dead deadline, um, then we can potentially pump on that. I, you know, it's, it's one percent of the overall budget, and the first impression walking into the building when we're once again tearing into a historic building, I don't, twelve years ago, we did the pointing and the brick and all this other work on this building, maybe fifteen, twelve, ten?
Twelveish.
We're doing a major reno and cut into it again, we're cutting corners, I, I don't want to get into the debate necessarily about the entryway right now, but I think an entryway generally in Vermont, in a building like this is, I don't know why a hundred years ago they didn't put mudrooms on buildings, for instance, or entryways on buildings, but whoever has a cape, you know what I'm talking about, right? So I think in the overall scope of the project, if we found reasonable ways, and it sounds like we found reasonable ways to fund these things, um, considering the project and how long it's taken to get here while everything gets more expensive, um, I, I support it as presented for the two, alternate two and three, um, and again, if we could get a, if we get some notice to have a conversation later, um, about the vaulted ceiling, I think that might be an interesting way to go about it. And Amber, I'm going to look at Zoom and see if you, nothing, okay. No comments. So going back to the memo, it sounds like, as stated, the question is, do we follow staff's recommendation to reassign sixty-eight thousand dollars and additional two hundred and eighty-five thousand from the lot fund and assign two hundred and fifteen thousand from the capital fund reserve to this project, um, to keep it moving?
Can I ask one more question?
Sure.
Is anything changing in the capital fund reserve as a result of using that balance? Is anything being deferred? Is anything, any other projects being impacted by that?
No, um, uh, and Jess, you can, uh, let me know again if I'm wrong about the...
Uh, and Jess, you can, uh, let me know again if I'm wrong about that, but. Really, it's using. The reserve that's there and so you can kind of see that the numbers sort of all shift a little bit down the road, but there's. There's nothing that is specifically being deferred or changed because we're adding in this additional 200, whatever it is, 45,000. Looks like Jess is nodding her head.
It's hard to see, but, sorry. Any other thoughts or reflections on this? I mean, I'll add for myself, I'm not thrilled that we have to go through these. Steps to get this done. It's unfortunate for sure, it's sort of not what was anticipated, but I think. I'm grateful that we're in the position of having a lot of fun and having a fairly healthy capital fund that. We can, we can do this as needed, I just. I think with the amount we've cut out of this project already, hasn't had to do anymore. Or wait, or wait to add these things when they're likely to be more expensive later.
The other side of it is, this is going to have to be done one way or the other, right? And so there's. One-time ARFA funds here that certainly gets our boots off the ground in a major way, so we're not going to the bond bank. You know?
Marcus, anything else?
I, I think for me where I'm at right now, I, I, I'm in support, I will be in support of this. Again. A majority of, of alternate three is that mechanical zone, which I agree is going to be necessary. But I think in order to, yeah, keep this moving and on the same time. I, I guess for me right now, it really has nothing to do with, this has to do with that, I don't know why the vestibule is sticking to my head so much. But it, you know, it feels like to me this is, it, right now, I can agree on this as it stands with the caveat, like you said, if we can come address this. At a later date when it's appropriate before. Somebody's starting to nail things together. I, I think I'm, I'm fine with that. Cause again, I just want to make sure that for the next 50 years, when this project is done, this, this.
If I'm honest, I would add it now. My, that's my feeling, but I don't want to have to have a lengthy debate about this because the request right now is to get the project moving.
Right.
We've been told we have some leeways, so I'm, I'm with you and I think we have some time to do that and I want to keep. But, you know, just.
That's how I'm feeling at the moment, so I, I, I will. Move that forward.
Well, Regina, Jess Harland, any other comments?
Do you want to have anything to add?
John?
John?
Uh, I think, uh, the presentation on both sides has been great so far and I, I have nothing further to add, I was mainly here in case there was a question that needed my expertise.
Appreciate that.
It's always good to see you.
Maybe we'll pause for a second and see if there's anyone in the room that has any comments or questions on this or anyone on Zoom. Let's go back to Zoom. I see no hands in the room and Christina. Uh, is online with her hand up. Hi, welcome.
Hi, thank you. Um, for those who might not know me, I'm Christina Cordemas, the director of CHIPS. And I just would like to say that having CHIPS at the center of the community, offering. A free after-school program to our community, um, along with 43 extra programs. Uh, extra events last year, last school year alone, I think is something that is super important to Essex Junction and the residents of Essex Junction. We're serving 130 kids on average every school week and that's 207 youth served from our community. And so we, we have. Every dollar that we raise goes back to our community and serves to support our families and our youth. So I think that whatever the council decides and the management of the city decides, I just hope that. The interests of the kids of the community are taken to heart.
Thank you, Christina. All right, I'm not seeing any other hands, anyone else in the room, so I'm going to bring it back to the board. And. If there is, if anybody wants to make the motion, I'll make the motion if that's where we believe we are, which I think it is.
I can read it.
Okay.
I move that the city council reassign $68,158 in lot funds for this project. Assign an additional $284,766 in lot funds for this project. Assign $215,242 from the capital fund reserve for this project. And authorize the city manager to move forward on the renovation of Two Lincoln with the funds as identified by staff herein. To include but not limited to the execution of a notice to proceed.
I'll second that.
Motion, a second, any further discussion? Uh, great, if not, all those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, motion approved unanimously, thank you, I hope that helps.
Thank you.
Excited about keeping this moving. Excellent.
Thank you, everyone.
Thanks, Harland, have a good time down there.
Thank you.
Sleep well.
Thank you.
Uh, great. And back from a couple of weeks ago, 5C, looking forward to this strategic plan report presentation and discussion. Ashley.
Yep, so we've got Ashley, we've also got David Burl here, who's going to give a, a. Somewhat brief presentation and really. Open it to questions.
Great, thanks for joining us.
So, um, from my memo, you guys can see, uh, basically we're at the end of our strategic planning process with Future IQ. Um, we've done a lot of stuff over the past few months and like Regina said, David is here, um, he's the CEO of Future IQ and has been leading this project for us. So I'm going to turn it over to David and let him go through his presentation and we're here for questions.
Great, thank you.
Okay, um, good evening, everybody, um, great to be with you. Um, Regina, I picked up the brief presentation note there, so I'll make this brief. I want to just basically give you, kind of walk you through the journey, right? And, and we're almost at the finish line, that we are just waiting for a few more people to, to do the, um, decision-making survey, the final prioritization. Uh, but I want to show you some preliminary data, uh, to, just so you get a sense of where that's going. I'm going to just share my slide deck here. Right. Okay, so, um. Uh, in terms of the timeline, so, um, started in August last year, we've gone through, we did listening sessions, we had the first community survey, the think tank, which a number of you were at. Uh, that was followed with the open house and focus groups, uh, the second community survey, and now we're really into the decision, the final decision-making part. The point of me showing this is that the, the brief was to really design a very, uh, open and community-engaged process. Um, and I think we've tried really hard with, uh, staff, with Ashley obviously, and with the steering committee to try and get people to weigh in on this. Um, and I think we've been pretty successful in terms of getting good community input. Um, in terms of numbers, um, we've, we're probably hitting, I would guess about 600 individual, uh, participants, I mean, some people had multiple inputs. Um, but you know, through surveys, focus groups and so on, we've had good input, plus there's been good social media and newsletters going out to, to the mailing list. Um, so we ran the first survey, all this data is obviously on the portal, um, but kind of want to walk you through the building blocks. Um, one of the things that was really interesting to me in the first survey, and I think it sets the stage for why this planning is really important. Uh, and this pivot chart looks at the data on people, how people feel about the current direction, um, of the city, so very concerned to very satisfied. Um, and how they feel about the ability to adapt to changes going forward. So first look at this, you've got a lot of people in the upper right, so they're feeling pretty good about direction and ability to, to adapt. Um, but there is a sort of a chunk of people here, uh, sort of slightly in the lower left who have some concern about direction and their ability to adapt and. And I think part of what we've done with the engagement is really to make sure we understand what's on that group's mind, um, so we can sort of temper. Strategies and the degree of action, so it's in sync with where the community is comfortable with in terms of change. Another part we followed up with was the think tank, so just to recap on that, uh, it was a two-day session, it was a deep dive into scenarios of the future, so speculating what. What the city of Essex Junction might look like, um, you know, sort of 10, 12 years into the future. If you were there, you remember we, we played out and this, basically all this sort of framework was built up through the course of the think tank. But we talked about community evolution and so there's a lot of discussion about, you know, what kind of way does the community want to go? Do we sort of think about protecting and preserving what we've got, I mean, it's a great community, you know, it's got a lot of, kind of, a lot of sort of connectedness and so on, do you just work to protect that? Or do you focus on adapting and growing, you know, knowing the world's changing? So that was a really interesting discussion about, uh, community evolution. Then there was the economic approach, um, you know, is it a, is it a market-led type of economic development or is it community-led? And I think this actually ties to a couple of discussions you already had tonight in terms of, you know, where's your posture and your comfort in terms of, um, how you approach this? Are you sort of proactive or are you reactive? Um, do you let the market lead it or do you let the community lead it? So we played out these scenarios. And this data here, I just want to spend a second on this, right? So we took that scenario matrix, um, and we asked people in the think tank. What they thought was the least desired future, what was the expected future and what was the preferred future? Um, and the concentration of color sort of, you know, is the number of, you know, there's more responses per, per box in this case. People were, really did not like this lower-left corner, which is this notion of protect and preserve and market-led sort of, you know. Try not to change and, and as a government, don't get too, too ambitious or do anything too much, right? I mean, people did not really, uh, support that future. Expected future is the one that people thought would happen in, based on your current trajectory. Um, you can see the concentration sort of, sort of here is slightly to the lower left. Um, but the important part is what's the preferred future and you can see it was in this sort of more in this upper-right quadrant, which was a sort of an appetite for community-led in terms of economic approach. Um, and an adapt and grow in terms of community evolution, so being quite intentional and proactive about how your community evolves. What's really interesting, of course, is, is there's a pretty significant gap between the expected, where people think you're currently heading, um, and where the preferred future is. And then the question is, how do you close that gap? This is data from the 40 people who are at the think tank, um, and we did validate this, I, I want to show you how we did that because we wanted to make sure that. We weren't sort of being overly ambitious with people who are in the think tank. The way we think about closing that gap between expected and the preferred, uh, we did some work with, um, focus groups and steering committee, um, and then also in the second survey. To build, to identify and then build out what we saw, um, as critical strategic pillars. So think of these as the big building blocks that are going to get you to that preferred future. Uh, and then there's obviously sort of detail in each one of these, but the pillars were housing and urban design, so this whole issue of how do you address the housing stock? The debates about, you know, density, you know, vertical, you know, family homes, multi, multi sort of dwelling residences and so on. Um, but also what it looks like, how you design, uh, the urban landscape to create the neighborhood feel and so on, big topic area. Public services and facilities, um, obviously pretty central sort of a pillar to have in a, in a city plan. Um, you know, this was a lot about the sort of issues of, um, you know, the responsible and open and transparent governance, um, safety, um, and community well-being. This one here, economic and business development, um, you know, a pillar about that sort of economic approach really and. Uh, sort of ideas in this were about, you know, the sort of, the, the business mix and makeup and the sort of the, the vibrancy of the local economy and so on. Um, transportation and connectivity, obviously, um, environmental stewardship. This was a really interesting one, I'll be kind of interested to get your take on the data on this, um. I mean, that came up in all sorts of ways from the open house and other sources, um, people are very connected to the environment. Um, so that's built in there and then of course, community engagement and decision-making, so these are the big building blocks, right? So really the second part of the, this whole project has really been about trying to understand these pillars. Um, what actions might make up those pillars and then some prioritizations. So the second survey, uh, we drilled right into those topics, um, um, and we asked questions like this around housing. And these were really trying to get a better take on what people are thinking about in terms of the topic, in this case of housing and urban design. And we drilled into that, you can see responses, uh, from, you know, essentially sort of mirroring the continuums in the scenario matrix, so you know, from one end of that continuum to the other. We used the data, and this is a piece that I don't think any of you have seen, we used the data from those pillar. So the pillars are drawn from the axes that make up the scenario matrix in part. We, we asked questions on each one, like I just showed you, um, and then we essentially recombined that data. So we took each individual's response for each one of those continuums and combined them to create a sort of theoretical or hypothetical X-Y point on the scenario matrix. So this is sort of reflecting how people would think about the future on individual issues and how they would stack up and how that correlates to that notion of. Uh, the scenario, the scenario matrix. And, and what's really interesting here is that almost all the responses landed again in this upper-right quadrant. Um, and there's about 150 survey responses in here. Um, so that gave us, we added this step, we weren't originally planning to do this, um, but we added this because we wanted to really make sure that the, the, the preferred future from the think tank. Was validated from, with broader community input. Um, and really getting down to, would people support the decisions that would head you down the path towards that preferred future? Cause it's one thing to be, oh, aspirational, we'd love to have that future, but as you well know, you're sitting there making decisions about money and funds and policy and so on. And that's kind of where the, sort of rubber hits the road. So we wanted to make sure that people would support the incremental decisions that would get you towards that preferred future. By and large, that's the case, right? There are a few people who are like, you know, just government, get out of it, um, but certainly, and this dotted line here is actually the average response. Uh, the median response is a little bit more towards the center of that upper-right quadrant. Um, this data is now on the project portal, so you can look at it. Um, we also asked people to rank these pillars, um, in terms of importance for action over the next five years, so we're starting to move into this prioritization piece of the, the plan. The, the longer the bar in this case, the, the higher the, the ranking, um, so housing and urban design, economic and business development. Public services and facilities were the, the highest ranked one. And environmental stewardship and transportation connectivity were the lowest of, as you can see, um, and this is for action over the next five years. Um, this perhaps initially surprised me a little, I, you know, the, the sort of, the information from the open house or discussions, there's a lot of attachment to environmental stewardship. Um, perhaps this is low because people see that's already, you know, there's already a lot going on. Um, and these might be seen as the more critical issues, but I want to dive into it a bit more, um, in the next piece. Um, in the report which you have, um, there's a draft, um, and it's moving to our draft final report. We did a three-page build-out on each one of the pillars. I think it's really important to tell the story about what makes up the strategy, why it's in there and what it means for people. Um, so in this case, public services and facilities, we talked about the importance of that, um, some of the data from the surveys, you know, in terms of resident value. We identified with the steering committee, um, three primary actions under each of the pillars. Um, that's presented as, with some explanatory text. Um, and then we also collected all the ideas that came up from the community, from various community surveys, the open house and focus groups. And these are grouped, um, as a set of ideas that connect each of those pillars. Um, it's a great way for people to see their thoughts and ideas sort of reflected in the, the final plan. So what we ended up with was, um, six pillars, three actions under each pillar, um, 18 actions in total. As, as much as we could, we were kind of faithful to the, to the wording and the sentiment that was reflected through the surveys and from the steering committee. And do a little bit of editorial, sort of to try and make sure they're sort of, sort of expressed in similar ways, but they cover things from, you know, creating. Citywide comprehensive sustainability plans to, you know, providing responsible, open, transparent government, improving cities' landscaping standards and designs and so on, right? So a broad section of ideas. One of the things that, um, in the final stages that we were really keen to do was to give some prioritization to this and this is very, this is preliminary data. This survey is being offered to. And this is very prelim- this is preliminary data, um this survey is being offered to uh councillors. Um senior staff and boards and and uh commissions. Um not everybody who we wanted to has taken the survey yet, that's why I'm saying it's saying it's preliminary data. Um but I wanna just show you what it looks like. We will post this to the project portal, so people can go in and play with it. Um you are able to filter it in the three categories of, you know, whether what the staff was seeing as priorities versus what council is and so on. Um this is um, this is a three way pivot, and I'm I'm gonna play with this a little bit, but I just wanted to sort of show you the s- sort of style of it. Uh we asked for each of those eighteen actions, we asked their importance of the action in terms of shaping the preferred future. So, you know, not that important, but very important, uh the willingness to seek and apply funding. So in other words, how much appetite was there to fund these actions? Uh and then the color here is the level of innovation. Uh we think we would like to see in implementing those actions, do we wanna be really innovative or do we wanna just sort of track on, try and test it? Um it'll be coded, um I I'm probably gonna try a different pivot here because everything came out as important. Um so it's sort of, so I might try the in- the innovation against the willingness to seek funding as a as well. I'm trying to separate these eighteen actions to give you a sense of, okay, here are the more. Sort of higher priority ones, knowing that you can't sort of start with a li- a list of eighteen things to hit straight away. Um what is interesting is that the providing responsible, open and transparent government. Um comes out in the three dimensions, so in terms of importance, willingness to seek and apply funding, to support the action. And the level of innovation, that comes that comes out as as one of the very highest actions. Um and I think that's really, you know, about you being a new city and people wanting to to sort of have this sort of. Sort of style of government that's really uh good on budget and all the things you've been talking about tonight. Um uh in the, on the platform, you'll be able to ho- hover over each one of these little bubbles and it'll, you know, information will pop up. Um but as another example, enhanced community connectivity is here, but again, preliminary data. Uh this may move a little because there are a few key people still to weigh in on this. Um we also did another another question, which was to try and tease out um this prioritization. Um this is about order of implementation, so we asked uh people in the survey to rank. Um the order of implementation, so the, you know, the thing we start with first and the thing we sort of is that's way down the list. So the implementation first is to the left, so those items to the left are the ones to implement first. Um interestingly here, the provide responsible, open and transparent government again comes out as the highest by, oops, sorry. By a clear shot, um but then I just tagged a couple of the others. Um enhance downtown and corridors, so that's the primary action in the pillar. That's about the economic and business development, that's the one that um really came to the fore there, that's obviously that whole sort of approach to the community. Um promote and enhance um safety, which is an action under the public services and facilities. Um enhancing community connectivity, um which is a action under the pillar about community engagement and decision making. And then you kind of work your way down, enhance the neighborhood feel, which is under the housing and urban design and so on. Um and similar to what we saw in the pillar prioritization, the ones that were around the environmental stewardship tended to be. It's not saying they're not important, cause all of these we know are important, um but they seem to be the ones that were sort of down the list in terms of order of implementation. Um this doesn't do a brilliant job of teasing them out, because you do have so many actions here that are grouped very tightly. Um so we'll see where the data lands, but um I think the sort of next step, I mean, this sort of gets to the end of the work we're doing, which is. You know, here's the vision, here's the strategic building blocks, here's a set of key actions that were identified by the community. Um here's a first cut of a sort of a of a ranking and prioritization. Um and then I think that the sort of debate begins, you know, essentially at the department level in terms of how do you turn. These ideas into part of the um the individual departmental plans and so on. Um so that's where we've got to now. Um as I said, there's still a few people who have not done the survey. Um we're hoping if you can sort of get that completed in the next couple of days, we can get that visualization wrapped up. Um but I think we've ended up in a pretty good place with, you know, some really strongly validated. Um appetite for this preferred future, which is sort of leading on that sort of, you know, sort of a community that's adapting and growing. And a community led economic development approach, so I think that's been identified and validated in a way that gives us a lot of comfort. Um I think the pillars uh are strong in terms of they address the core uh building blocks. Um and I think the actions are starting to get teased out. And and really, there's one or two actions or at least one action on each of those pillars that has jumped to the surface or to the top. Um and I think that gives a a really good starting point as you think about, okay, how do we start to now convert this. Vision, strategic action plan into your implementation, um that I think that there's been a good community. Uh and stakeholder input into identifying some of those primary primary actions, so hopefully that was brief enough. So that's the overview of it. Um you know, it's been great to work with the the community and and with yourselves and of course, um Ashley and Regina. Um but I think we're, you know, we're really close, we're almost, you know, we're just days away really from having this buttoned up.
I just wanna say thank you very much for that presentation, for all the work over the past, it's about six, seven, almost eight months.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
And to Ashley and especially um the volunteers from the steering committee. Um it's been a, it's been a certainly an intentional process and I'm really encouraged by what I'm seeing. I'm not gonna lie, I'm a little surprised on the environmental stuff, um really stood out is that, again, it's pretty surprising, but. Um when we first had this in the packet, I really dove into it and I'm really um looking forward to seeing what. Um comes in your final, um in the final data and um I hope all the councillors have taken the survey, the last survey. Um and it's just a plea for the rest of the folks that have been sent the the last link to to finish that up, um really want your input. Um and I I guess my only question right now is, are we gonna have a. I'm assuming we're gonna have time, once we get the final report and that final data, to really dive into this a little more. Um I have a lot of questions that feel preliminary right now until I see the final.
Yeah.
Yeah, so um there's a lot to come in this big system, right? I keep talking about how this helps us create um a. Uh five year strategic plan for the council and how that kind of fil- filters down into annual work plans and really. Um also, at the same time, what we're gonna be doing is asking the staff to develop annual work plans as well. So their work will be kind of coming from the bottom up. Those instructions will be going out to the department heads pretty quickly, um within the next week or so. Um as well as the budget instructions, depending on uh if we get some guidance in the another agenda item tonight. Um and so the thought process is um. The council will be able to do your own prioritization based on what's out of this project. Um and we've got the list that we talk about all the time. Um and we will get all of that into sort of a workable spreadsheet for you. So you can kind of see who would be responsible for what, where it kind of lands in the prioritization process coming out of this um report. Um and the departments, as they do their annual work plans as well, they're um. Tying back to these pillars um and actions as well, if if they actually fit. Um if they don't, we'll just sort of identify that. Um and the hope is that um. In the fall, you'll kind of see collectively what what the level of effort is. Um and hopefully help you um think through the FY twenty six budget. The, this is still an imperfect system at this point in time. Ideally, we already have that. By April or May, we already have that work plan in place. You folks help prioritize it, you get input from the department heads, you hope you folks help prioritize it. Then you're giving guidance to the departments before they even develop their budgets. Because the way of this is timing is working out, those two are kind of gonna go on parallel tracks for this point in time. And we'll kind of see how that comes together in the fall. Um and hopefully confident it will be. A lot more information and better coming all together this fall, but it still isn't gonna be the awesome system till next year.
And and we're talking about, you know, looking into a budgeting process and model that. Um kind of takes in feedback about how we're doing on these things as well, from the community and from from stakeholders. To, I mean, that, you know, iteratively, not this year, potentially not next year, but. You know, all of these things will start to come together so people can see actual metrics and then provide feedback on how we're doing on items, potentially. Um where these priorities meet, what the work that's actually being done, how is that being done, how is the money, so.
Yeah.
It's a long process, but I think it's a great transition um or goal. How to leverage this info. Is there any other comments from?
So um as a member of the steering committee, but really just sitting here in the seat as a city councillor. I I do wanna echo your sentiments about the volunteers and and, you know, Scott's here in the audience right now. I know he's not the only one on that particular committee, but you know, as an example, Scott was great at um. Talking about and questioning methodology and talking about, you know, the answers and how we're gonna read this information. And that kind of insight that came from volunteers and committee members. Um was essential to make this whole process smooth. David and Celine were great partners to work with, they were really helpful in walking us through it. Having participated in all those forums and surveys, I was really impressed by this particular process and. While I'm sure along the way, many people were like, you know, I'm just hoping that I'm gonna get some solid answers. I think you could see from this, we at least have some solid direction and um. The one thing that I think, you know, it really did say in looking at this preliminary information is that. We're still cut, we're still in alignment pretty much with what's come before, you know. From heart and soul and everything else, all that stuff that came before, we're still heading in that same direction, we're having those same conversations. So it's not like all of a sudden, we're gonna have to take a left turn here in the middle of of the all this work, so. It's really encouraging that that we still have that and um it's, I'm really grateful to the community. Who came out and participated either in those events or in the surveys. Because again, it's it's so important, the participation, just like having people out here today at this particular meeting, you know. Participation matters, hearing those voices, because um while you vote us here into these seats. Um I could not do this on my own, I it require, I speaking for myself, it requires. That community participation in or and feedback in order to, again, continue to do this job, help make the right decisions for this community, so. Um I just wanted to reiterate and say thank you to everybody on this project.
Many thanks.
Lot of information.
Yeah, many thanks, and it's really nice to have a much more clear picture.
Yeah.
Than we've had in the past with other previous efforts.
I have one request and it's semantic, but um I just went to look for the results um while we were listening. Um can we get a permanent link or semi-permanent link sort of on the homepage that goes right to the result, the lab IQ? It's cycled off the homepage just because of our natural progression of news and everything. I just didn't know if there's a way to keep a. As this finishes up and as we start discussing it more for the next couple of months, if there's a way to keep a semi-permanent link somewhere, people can just kind of go and find.
Yes, I can make it a top news story, keep that on for as long as we want.
Okay, I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
Cause there's a lot here and I really hope people take some time to kind of dive in, especially if it's, it sounds like, David, it can be interactive, right? You can, you can adjust and look at different variables, so I think, I think it's worth promoting. I don't have any other big questions. Um like I said, I'm looking forward, so it doesn't sound like anybody else does either, Amber is all set.
Well, David, through this particular process, would you agree that moving here is probably like the best idea for you and anyone else?
Well, there's the challenge of density and population, isn't there, Marcus?
It's a great community and again, thank you.
Are there, is there anyone in the in the room that has any comments or questions about this item tonight? Or anyone on Zoom that has anything they'd like to question or comment or anything they'd like to share? Give you a moment if you do, please use the raise your hand link at the bottom.
Scott.
Scott, come on up, please just introduce yourself in the mic.
Hi, I'm Scott McCormick, I was on the steering committee and I just have two comments. One is, I really wanna thank Future IQ for the work they contributed during this process. And David, your flexibility. Um I think that sometimes you were a bit frustrated with some of my comments, but I appreciate the ability to work with you. Um also, I think Ashley should be commended for her work, she did an amazing job during this process. Third thing, I just wanna point out, um I'm not so concerned about environment being down low. In my forty five years of professional life, environment's always been on the bottom, it's not a priority for most people. People think about housing, income, food, childcare, um those are issues that people are affected by. I think one of the comments here on this page, pillars are contin- are considered to be interdependent. I think as we move forward, we need to think about how do we mix and match the best of these pillars together. For example, weatherization with affordable housing, with building code development. With um uh business development in in the five corners with a TOD study. If you start thinking about linking some of these together as an interdependent program, you're not playing each one off against the other. And I think that's possibly the way to go in the future. But again, thanks, everybody, it was a great, great success.
Thanks, Scott, thanks for doing the work. All right, well, it sounds like that's it. Ashley, once again, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Ashley.
Thanks, David, and thanks, Celine, for us. All right, um we are doing things a little differently tonight because our executive session will inform a conversation later in the meeting. So we are going to take a break, um so to speak, from the public portion of our meeting. And go into executive session probably for about fifteen to twenty minutes ideally. Um and we will be back, we will leave the room if folks wanna stay, um but there will be a pause in the meeting. And since I have the motions in front of me, I will read them.
Okay.
I move the city council make the specific finding the premature disclosure of the contractual matters. Would place the city at a substantial disadvantage and I move the city council enter into executive session to discuss a contract pursuant to one VSA three one three. Section A one A to include the city council and city manager.
Second.
The motion is second, all those in favor, uh say aye.
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 Motion is approved minimally, um we back in where they need to be.
Recording in progress.
All right, um all the meeting of the Essex Junction City Council back to order. And we are now back out of executive session, thank you for your patience. Um we are going to move on to five E. Discussion and consideration of direction setting for the FY twenty six budget process.
Okay, so the memo. Sorry, let me get there.
Jess.
Five D, that looks like page eighty four in the packet. Um, okay, um so we had um. An initial conversation about improvements to the budget process. Um and setting some direction for the development of the FY twenty six budget. And so we've um staff, uh Ashley Snell, I mean, Ashley, sorry. I'm all thrown, normally it gets to go home after executive session. Ashley. And Jess have and I have sort of thought through this quite a bit in terms of how do we kind of help the strategic plan. Help um with some direction setting for the budgets going forward and how can we improve the budget process itself? Um for all of the reasons that some of the strategic plan says in terms of transparency and trying to be more clear about. about what's in the budget. So, don't need to go through this whole memo in full, but essentially, just so folks are aware, this will be our third city budget and we'll still only have one and a half years of actual city, city data. So we're still a little bit in the infancy stages here. Already talked about the strategic plan earlier and mentioned how we're working with the departments as well to come up with some work plans of what, what they have going on and so you can kind of see this come together and what we might have capacity to do or what we might need to take off the plate in order to do something different. Really hope to achieve some of that within this budget process. The budget will, the process will begin earlier. Our, our plan is that we are going to get out the direction from whatever comes out of tonight, if you've got some direction to give us, out to the departments. And so they'll get those instructions, I think probably as early as Friday, and then the directions on that work planning will, will come next week. We are currently in contract negotiations for the association, so once that is set, we will have some further direction for the years going out. And just have still had some resource constraints in terms of, you know, last year, we're still actively separating from the town on some, on some things. So we've got a couple of different things that are happening that will hopefully keep the, keep the process smooth. We also thought about the question of can you also get the enterprise budgets at the same time, because it's really difficult to not understand the full impact on our, on our community. We will definitely do our best at that. It's, but it's pretty tricky for a couple of reasons. One, the finance department is also working on the audit at basically this exact same time period. And because those budgets are more focused on the actual rates, the earlier we do it, the less precise that they are. But we will put forth an effort there. Also talked about your process and kind of how you receive this information and sort of the, the painful full day retreat, or full day budget day tradition that's kind of happened here over the last couple of years, and, and thought through some alternatives. Essentially, what we're thinking here is perhaps we did videos with each department at the very end of the process for the FY25 budget. We could sit down, do videos with each of the departments, both through their budget and their work plan, and make those try to be, you know, somewhat short, like five, 10 minutes. Get those done late November, early December, get them posted on the website, so folks can kind of digest that and hear it and see what that is and not just the council, the public as well. Then we could schedule maybe two, three to four hour blocks of time where we go through the Q and A and we have it scheduled, so you'll know which ones are coming up first and which ones are coming up second, and can kind of think, think through it in, in that way. I don't know how you feel about that, if you feel like that would be more helpful or, or beneficial, but we were definitely trying to kind of get to this middle ground of one full day where you've got to take off of work to make that happen versus six night meetings and kind of it taking a lot more time. So that's the thinking there. Then just reiterating, in terms of bringing the budget to the community, we had some great success with that open house and community meal again, so we'll, we'll do that again. And certainly staff can continue to help organize other options and work to improve sort of the infographic kind of communication ability as opposed to expecting somebody to read through rows and rows of budgets. And then I think I've already talked about the future improvements under number six here at nauseam tonight, under a number of items. Also, just so folks are aware, Questica is a budget reporting program. It can also be used to set up the budgets. If you're familiar with how the town of Essex budgets look, they are using that system. We will have that system in place for real-time reporting for FY25. So essentially now you're getting a monthly financial report of like where things are. We'll, that system will be set up where you can sort of log in and check it out on a daily basis. But we aren't going to use that to set up the budget itself until FY27, which is sort of need a year to sort of see how that is working and before we transition. Then, future improvements, as we kind of working through this whole strategic planning and work program prioritization process, we will be certainly looking at performance and outcome-based budgeting and trying to work in some of that as well. So that really brings in a lot more in terms of the metrics and, and where things are going. So, the recommendation or really the ask is you're thinking on overall direction for the budget in terms of percentage increase or decrease or, or keep it flat. And then this is not as critical for tonight, but if you do have some thoughts on how we actually do that schedule and the budget day presentation, we do put that information into the, we kind of have that schedule in mind as we put the instructions out, but if you don't feel comfortable on direction for that tonight, we can adjust.
All right. Well. Do we want to, well, let's open up. Elaine, do you have any?
Um, just jotting some notes down so I don't forget in my.
Yep.
So, I'm gonna, do one, the, the scheduling first and then, I am going to advocate that we keep the full day budget day. And the reason we did that back in the day when we first started doing that was not just to get away from six evenings, but out of consideration for the department heads, so that they wouldn't have to have the evenings and they could just come as, and during the course of their regular working day. And at the time, the members of the board of trustees were able and willing to take a day off work. And I'm still able, I'm privileged enough to be able to do it myself, but that might not be the case for my fellow councillors. So I just want to put a plug in there for maintaining the single day. The other thing is in terms of reviewing the budget, for me personally, having it all, the conversations all on one day, it's a cohesive look. It allows me to not lose focus. If we do one meeting and then several days go by, it's just going to be hard for me personally to re-engage with that information and then come back to it again. So the one day actually was very helpful. So I, I'm going to advocate for the full day again, understanding that I'm happy to do whatever the staff and council decide as a whole, but I feel like full day was the most efficient use of our time. Regarding the increase, or regarding the budget percentage increase or decrease, I mentioned this on our way out the door from the executive session. A conversation we don't have, which I think we should have, is what can we live without? Not what can we cut, but rather, has each department ever looked at itself and said, do we really need to do this thing anymore? Is this the most efficient use of our time? Is this the most efficient use of our operations? Are there things we're doing just because we're supposed to be doing them or we've always done them that way? Can we take a lean approach and look at what we can subtract before we talk about what we can add? And I wonder, and this is just like a mental exercise, I wonder if that happened, would the department, by department increases be as high? I would just like to encourage that mindset, that maybe there's some things we're doing that we don't need to be doing anymore, or some purchases we're making that we really don't need to purchase anymore. That said, the, the old standby that I always used to hear in years, years ago, and I still stand by as today, is 3%. And I know that realizes this, that there's some, there may be service cuts to that, but we're going to be facing probably a minimum of a 15% healthcare insurance premium increase. We are negotiating a new contract with staff. We are going to see increases for all sorts of stuff. And the big elephant in the room is exactly how much money are we going to be paying in our education tax increase? And we have zero control and zero input onto that. And so I'm not comfortable asking for even a 6% like we did this year. I'd like to see us come in at 3. So, and I don't, if I may ask, Marlon, as a member of the school board, do you have an idea? I know the yield bill has been vetoed and they haven't had the veto override session yet, but what is your estimate as a school board member, what Essex Junction residents can expect to pay in property taxes, the increase?
Sure thing. Right now.
Could you, sorry, just introduce yourself.
Sorry, Ron Verasami, Essex Junction resident, also the school board clerk for Essex Westford School, School District.
Thanks for coming up.
Yeah, no problem. So with the yield bill right now, where it stands is obviously up in the air. The last estimate we got is for the state as a whole, a minimum of a 15% increase for every district. That's if we do nothing, if we just keep regular spending as it is, that's where that, obviously, things can change. We shifted in, ours came in last year, it was 18%. We came in below that for our district, but it came with a lot of hard cuts. So we know already for our district, we're going to probably be in the same boat. We're going to have to be looking at a lot of hard cuts to try to keep it below that 15%. And it'll be different for every district because clearly there are different tax rates for Westford, for the junction and for the town. And as we know, reappraisal's not going to be done for next year, so that is also going to have an effect on that there, that even if the district comes in, as it did this year, basically at almost a, just above like, just less than 1% increase in a lot of areas, we were still going to see double-digit increase because of CLA. And so that's still going to be a hard effect on our community. And so that, I know, as we've seen this past year, our tax rate with the CLA, a lot of community members don't delineate the difference of like what goes in there, when your taxes go in there, they just look at just the bills as its whole and just look at it as one large amount, even though there's a lot of factors. And you guys came in with a very conservative tax increase this past year. We tried to do the same, but then there's a lot of factors statewide that are out of our control. So we know we have a big challenge ahead of it. We know it's going to have a huge effect on your budget as well, so.
So best guess, 15 at the moment.
For the entire state, yeah.
Yeah.
And we're gonna, we're gonna try to come in below that, but we, we hope some things will come into play where the yield bill falls and we don't know what's going to happen, what the governor's going to suggest and his team's going to suggest versus the, the senate and the house. It could come down, it could go up, we don't know. But we do know that the longer it draws out, it will actually have a negative effect on the school districts because we're going to have to start borrowing money from
That's right.
Our tax anticipation notices or notes to cover that as opposed to getting the money we normally would get from the state on July 1st, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Okay. Tim, Marcus?
I, I think Elaine hit the nail on the head really for what I was saying, what I'm feeling, how I'm looking at the whole thing. I gotta tell you, I was really looking forward to a full budget day. I think that's, you know.
Your sandwiches.
Might be quality bake shop donuts or something to start us off in the morning. But yeah, and I, I acknowledge that it is difficult for some people to get the time off from work and it's, but I really think it's an advantage for us, for staff, for department heads to, to have it in a day and, and really be able to, to look at things cohesively and to see how it's all going to mix together. And I think, again, I mean, I think you're absolutely right, it, 3%. I mean, the, the pressures on our residents are enormous, absolutely enormous, and it's only going to continue. And it's, there's circumstances that we cannot control. So I think we have to do our due diligence to control what we can control. And that's probably going to be, you know, some conversations that are less than desirable, but I think that's our reality. So I will reiterate exactly what was, has already been said. I'll, I'll just expand on it a little bit more. I'm also in support of the full day. I don't, I'm also privileged enough, I'm happy to take the day off and I do think it would be better, it would be easier on staff versus floating, floating evenings. As far as the budget is concerned, I have the same concerns. To be completely honest, I mean, I'd love to see zero, but I'm willing to work within the, I mean, again, this is all, you know, what we have to work within. We're going to have to work on this in order to get this like to 3. And the big thing for me is going into this particular discussion and negotiation that we're going to have, I agree with Elaine's assessment that we have to have that hard look. And the reason that we're starting this conversation is so we can do that. What I learned in my year one was trying to take that hard look as we'd nickled and dimed through all those departments was not the right time in order for us to be able to have some of those deeper discussions about whether it was process procedure or physical items that we needed to talk about, whether or not we needed that or not. During the middle of that budget discussion is not the right time to have it. So I, I think going into this, this summer, this is the time that we need to be looking at asking those, those hard questions and then hopefully coming back to the board, you know, with, here's the stuff, here's our must haves and here's our, you know, maybe nots, and then going from there and helping to work with, you know, staff to, to define that. I did have a question on, again, the future, and I really appreciate you bringing up, let me use your specific language versus using mine, about the outcome-based budgeting. Just out of curiosity, knowing that Questica is coming online in the future, does Questica support this type of budgeting process?
Jess?
Oh, Jess is.
It can, it can. So Unisolutions is the company that owns Questica. They actually are pushing really hard, strategic and performance-based budgeting as part of their, like an add-on to their Questica budgeting and reporting software. So Ashley and I have it on our list to do a demo of that in the near future and just see what it looks like, see how it lines up, if we think we could use it, and most importantly, what the cost is. So that, that will be included probably in the finance budget, possibly as a proposal for future.
Great, thank you. The other thing that I, I want to acknowledge too, along these same lines, last year during the budget process, all the departments put forth their metrics for this next year and what that was going to look like. I want to make sure that I emphasize that going into these discussions, I want to not just have a bulleted look back, I want to have a look back at those metrics that they put forth and where they performed and where they did not, so that we can again, have that proper conversation and then work again with staff to, if we need to talk about prioritization, if we need to talk about, you know, where improvements need to happen, we can, we can have that particular dialogue. I also don't want it to appear to the public that we are just putting metrics out for the sake of quelling a few voices. No, we're, we're using this method. We used it last year. We want to follow up and make sure that we follow this completely through that particular discussion. So.
Yeah.
Sorry.
And we, you know, I think that list of metrics last year was really first stab without a whole lot of direction on what we were really trying to do. And so our hope this year is we've got with the sort of more formalized work plan concept is we've got a more specific set of directions around what those metrics should be and how we're going to use them going forward. We're trying to figure out how to both start the process based on those, essentially those. We're trying to figure out how to both start the process based on those, essentially those summaries and those metrics from last year, how to kind of incorporate them as sort of a progress report, plus looking forward to what that, the new system will be. So, um, a lots, lots more to come, but we definitely, um, are thinking through how to bridge the two.
Awesome. Last thing I do want to touch on was a suggestion that Elaine made in the previous meeting concerning, uh, counselors potentially being, you know, maybe the,
Oh, yeah.
You know, becoming liaisons within the budget with different department heads. I appreciate your call out in, in the packet about that. I understand that particular difficulty. I just want to acknowledge that I, I thought it was a good idea at the time and in further reflection, I, I really, um, I really like the idea because of the fact that it gave us an opportunity to really do a deep dive in a way that I haven't observed in the past. And, um, and it was also supported by the recent conversation that I was really grateful that you and Chelsea had with me concerning some of the systems that we have here in place and trying to understand that. And it really gave me a lot more insight into what's happening in that department, why yada, yada, yada. And, and being able to do that work. While I, again, acknowledging staff concerns, um, I, I don't know how best that we do that kind of thing. Um, I think we're all very curious people. Maybe it's fine that it's left our own, but I don't, I don't know that I just want to kind of forget that idea because again, I saw value in it in my own personal experience. And I think that there, there is some value to figuring out how we have those conversations. I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Yep.
Amber, how you doing?
Well, for the sake of time, I'm just going to say I reiterate everything that's been said. I agree with the all-day budget meeting and the three percent.
Okey doke. So I'm fine with three percent. I do have however, some priorities, um, that I'm flexible on. But I, I want to make sure we're able to incorporate things that we've been working towards. And one of those things, um, loosely imagined is some sort of incorporation of DEI and also team building, community building within our organization and then how that extends out. I want to see a serious commitment and conversation around that, even if it means we're making choices in other places. I think we put it off. I think we've, a few of us have been doing work with the LCT. We're going to come report back on that in the very near future, I think, in the next one, two or three meetings. We have work to do as an organization. I think we have work to do as an organization and the community. And I, I just want to see us seriously prioritize that. I don't know what that dollar amount is, um, but I, I just want to call that out. Getting to a point where we can measure our, our performance, you know, if that takes extra subscription, if it takes, you know, again, that's a priority for me, trying to continue on a pathway to be able to demonstrate that we are paying attention to how we're doing and how that impacts the budget and the tax rate.
Be great to have a dashboard.
Exactly. And dashboard idea, right? So how do we, you know? I also want to make sure we're flexible or we're considering, right, that, you know, we're going to have to see what departments come back with. I, I'm going to agree initially with the three percent. I, I don't want that to necessarily be taken as every department can only, you know, I, I'd like for you to exercise some flexibility within the organization. I mean, we had this criticism, uh, when the library was mentioned in the last process. And I think it was a fine reflection back that we're targeting the library. In reality, we had different asks of different departments in different ways. Every department has its challenges and pressures and costs, and they're all going to be different. And I'm not a huge fan of blanket, like everybody cut by X or everybody do this. Because it really doesn't allow a department, the whole organization to be nimble. So I just encourage the walk of creativity, like, you know, maybe in year one, you know, twenty-six, this is what happens over here in these three areas, not over here, but we come back to these departments later, right? You know, so that's really more for your, that's your purview, obviously. And, you know, don't, you know, nickel and diming was, we all, that last year, I just don't want to return to that process. I really appreciate talking about it early. I, I don't agree with the day. I think if department heads have two, three hour nights where they have a scheduled slot, they can join us for twenty to thirty minutes. I don't know that I can donate another day of time off, um, for the process, so we'll have to see how it's scheduled and I'll have to decide based on my family's needs for that time off. So I can't commit at this time, but I understand everybody's point of view. I'm privileged enough to do it, I just have other decisions to make. And. Oh, enterprise budgets, so rec. So this came up a little bit, um, in the last year, and I think we're to the point, and maybe we're a couple of years off or a year off from this. So we can think about that more. When Elaine mentioned having departments really decide if what they're doing is necessary to be doing. And it relates to the conversation about when we see enterprise budgets. You know, I, I've been wanting for a long time, but we've been preoccupied with other bigger things to really understand the cost of having non, what I will say are non-recreation activities, childcare, preschool, after-school on the overall recreation budget. We're getting close to understanding some of that when we talk about enterprise fund donation or, um, transfers back to the general fund for costs associated with things like, um, Park Street School and things. I'm not saying I want those activities to go away. I just need to understand for myself and be able to explain what offering these services does to the overall organization in terms of how many people are there and how much that organization costs generally. If they are completely and one hundred percent transparently covered by the activity, great. If it is a twenty thousand dollar addition, if it's a hundred thousand dollar addition to the general fund budget for that department, that's kind of what I want to get closer to. And I don't know that we have to get there in the twenty-six budget, but I really like to try. So that's my only other ask. I don't know that that ask would be the same for the other, other enterprise budgets. I feel like those are absolute one hundred percent have to's. And again, I don't want anybody to think that I'm advocating for getting rid of any of those services. But I think we really need to drill down to like, what are they actually costing in terms of number of people and cost for the whole department to run? Because we may just need to make some adjustments. And maybe, you know, having some of that information in lieu of having the enterprise fund for it at budget day will be helpful. And I, I don't even know if there's enough capacity for finance to do that in this upcoming year. But it's just one of those things I'm, I'm really curious about. And I think that's it.
Can I add to that, Raj?
Sure.
My understanding from previous conversations was that the council in general was interested in taking a deep dive into the rec budget regardless this year. And, and to understand it better, and we were starting to talk about setting up a rec advisory committee. I would like to see that data anyway.
Oh, sure, yeah.
Yeah, and, and also I feel like, like you said, the, the enterprise budgets, the other enterprise budgets we have, water, wastewater and sanitation, they're obviously must haves, but also they're kind of under a microscope. We get a lot of detail about them. We know every single line item in those three enterprise funds and we know very, very little about the rec enterprise fund. I would like the same level of scrutiny and the same level of detail on the rec side that we have on the water side. And, and what you're asking for is exactly that, like, well, this program, who, who is it? How much does it cost there? And how much does it cost, how much does it cost program users and how much does it cost us? Just so we know, I would like to have the same level of explicit, explicit data and transparency for that enterprise fund as we have for the wastewater and sanitation.
And I guess, I think it makes sense, you know, we're, we're asking for the facility study or for the, I'm sorry, I don't know if it's a facility study or if it's, I'm trying to remember what we called it. Basically, they're going to look at rec programming generally, I think, right?
Yeah.
And we're going to try to stand up a rec advisory committee. And so having a lot of that information will, will just help push all of those efforts forward.
Exactly.
And, um, so yeah, again, I feel like I've certainly benefited from those programs. And again, I just want to reiterate a third time, not suggesting we get rid of anything. We have to be able to really explain, which I think was,
Yep.
we had some difficulty with or some of our members have had difficulty with in the past. And that will help us really understand, and they're, they're complex. I mean, it's the interplay between the enterprise fund and the general fund is, on all of these is, is difficult.
Look, there's nothing wrong with the city council wanting to have more details about any particular fund and we shouldn't feel bad about asking for it.
Oh, I just, I don't feel bad about asking for it. I just don't want to get, give any impression that we're, we're looking to have reason to get rid of a service.
Yeah, no, no.
That's all.
It's what Essex Junction really special. So why, I don't see why we would ever want to change it, but we need to know more about it.
If I can add to that, because in, in the conversation around EJRP specifically, since there are programs that we, that, that department supports, that also supports other communities, I'd really like to know a little bit more about that piece of it because while met much of that pro- those programs are in the enterprise, I think we should ask the question as to whether or not these communities should help in some small way at least to support some of these programs since we're supporting their community members. At, at least have that discussion.
It's pay to play. So if I live in Jericho and I want my kids in the daycare, I'm going to pay EJRP. I don't, I don't see EJRP childcare as supporting other communities. I see them as offering a service that anybody in Vermont can take advantage of if they, their kids fit in the program and they're on the waiting list and they pay the tuition. And they pay a different tuition than residents do. So I just want to, I want to cautious, caution us not to look at this as we're using our dollars to pay for other communities because that's not what's happening here.
No, no, and I, absolutely. But I, I think it does impact on, there's impacts on our own infrastructure. There's impacts on other infra, you know, there, there's all these pieces at play. And I just want to have a better understanding of that because again, if, if we are while covering the costs of employees, but yet maybe the cost of our infrastructure is on our general fund, which is part of what is being impacted by these programs, I just wonder if there isn't a relevant conversation to be had or a question to be asked depending. I mean, again, I'm not, I'm not saying that, just like you, I don't, I'm not saying that I want anything to go away. I'm not saying that I want to change it. I just want to be better informed, so if nothing else, I can better understand how this all, all works, so.
Just click that to the memo.
Can I ask a quick question while you're checking? You talked about some kind of council retreat. Is that on, if that's happening, could we schedule it so the calendars just, we all have it on our calendars? Cause summer is already here.
That concept is not till next spring.
Oh, okay.
Little room to breathe.
Don't mind me, don't mind me to get on Elaine's calendar.
Yeah, yes, yes, and, but yeah, actually, next spring is, summer's easier than spring for me, so, yeah.
Yeah.
I get, the only other thing I'd mention is, um, I'm looking forward to the, the work plans and I love the video idea. Because I've always wanted plain English, um, explanations of what the budget says, um, that we can point people to. And so I'm, I'm appreciative of, uh, the videos that were made, um, last round and looking forward to what can be done this round potentially. And if there's a, you know, the work plans, I'm, I'm not sure, let you all look on that, like how those are going to look, but. Yeah, so thank you. I, I don't know if, if that's what kind of all of what you were looking for, what we just provided.
That is great. Thank you very much. That's the pretty clear direction, so I appreciate that.
Wonderful.
Okay.
All right, so let me get back to the agenda. Actually, printed form right in front of me. Um, actually, before we do that, is there anyone in the room that has any questions or comments on that, uh, topic item? And going back to Zoom, is there anyone on Zoom that has anything that they'd like to add to that budget conversation? If there is, please use the raise your hand feature at the bottom of the screen. Not seeing anyone in the room, not seeing anyone on Zoom, so we will move on to discussion and consideration of next steps for Main Street Park.
Awesome. Okay, so this looks like page eighty-eight in the, or eighty-seven in the packet. And essentially we have talked about this teeny tiny little park quite a bit, um, already. Just wanted to get your questions answered from last time and, and circle back just, uh, to get your direction on this. So essentially, the grant is two hundred thousand. Um, we can still get that full grant if we do a, a more minimized design and the complete match on the city side would only be forty thousand in order to take advantage of that full two hundred thousand. So that is, um, essentially an option for you. Uh, which I believe is option two here in Chris's memo. Or we also option three, so option one, we move forward as is with the current design. I don't think anybody wants to do that, but let me know if I'm, I'm wrong. Option two, move forward with, um, just forty thousand from the Economic Development Fund to support two hundred thousand dollar grant coming from the state to do a minimized design. Option three is we, um, don't move forward on this park, uh, have the forty thousand dollars in the Economic Development Fund for other purposes.
Sounds pretty clear. Uh, Amber, let's start with you since you're online and we haven't done that yet. Any comments or questions?
I am going to put my vote in for option two.
Okey doke. Tim?
That's the boat I'm rowing, option two.
Marcus? And you don't have to tell me how you're going to vote necessarily, but if you. Questions or comments or?
Yeah, I, ah, so I'm, the, when I saw this, the first thing I, didn't we answer this question?
Yeah. A couple of times.
I mean, we kind of, we kind of did in the sense that we just needed to make sure we could do the minimum contribution.
Right, but I thought in the last discussion, it was basically the general agreement felt like it was option three or come to us with a plan. And I guess the hard part that I have with this is the fact that while I see options and, you know, we've got pictures of the wood planters and we've got pictures of the sails, this isn't really a plan. This is just, are we okay, I guess? And so I, I guess I was hoping that I would see a little bit more from this, from this idea. But honestly, I'm okay with option two, um, with these ideas in mind. Now, I did do some investigating of my own and I appreciate you providing these options in here. I'm a little concerned about like, and the reason I needed a plan or would like a plan, spelling this out a little bit better, is because I don't know what the intended cost is. If the, it feels like, is our target cost two hundred and forty thousand dollars total? The forty of ours and two hundred from this grant? Or are we only going to spend a hundred thousand? But at the same time, you know, something like, and we've had these discussions previously, the shade sales, I could buy twenty-four foot shade sales for seventy-five dollars online. Then I have to buy a pole and I can put a couple of those, so I could put a couple of those in probably for five hundred bucks. Yes, you know, just off the top of my, let's say it's a thousand. But I mean, I feel like I'm kind of, what are we, what are we doing? Cause I'm fine with these kinds of wood structures temporary to help, again, make it a little bit better, but at the same time be prepared for what the long-term play is over there. So I, yeah, so anyway, that's my thing.
I think what we're doing here is we're authorizing before we lose this grant, the city to proceed with the minimum possible contributions that drawing can be done up for the budget we've authorized.
Okay, so.
I think that's kind of the, that was the request of the last meeting.
Yeah.
We need to know specifically what's the minimum amount we can contribute. Is it the forty thousand we think it is? We didn't ask for design.
Well, yeah, was the grant still available for a lower? Yeah.
Well, like I said.
Because it will cost us more to get the design. And so we don't want to move forward on that unless you folks want to move forward on the project. And I almost.
And I almost hesitated on putting this example in there, because I feel like it's a specific example that is not probably at all what the committee would come together and say they want to do. I think Chris's concept was just, there are way cheaper ways to sort of achieve these kind of park, park places, as an example.
Yeah.
But, that, that wasn't the intent.
Okay.
We're, we're saying we want to provide an area for shade and break, and just an area that offers a little bit of refuse from the hustle and the bustle that happens here at Five Corners. And if we can do that for a minimal exposure from our Economic Development Fund with the help of the grant, and still meet the criteria that the grant is accessible to us, and if we're serious about wooden planters, and they come to fruition, maybe we can get up to the Center for Technology at Essex and have them mill their lumber, right? So, yep.
I, I'm okay with option two.
Elaine?
I wasn't present at the last meeting to participate in this conversation, but I just want the absolute bare minimum that we can spend to be done in that park, knowing that down the road, we have some serious reconstruction coming. So I'm not interested in remediation, because I don't think we need to break the ground if we, if we can void it, like, whatever we can do, the cheapest amount, so option two works for me, if forty thousand dollars is like, the maximum we're gonna spend on our side, I'm fine with that.
Okay, great. So, any members of the public in the room have any comments or questions they want to make? Any numbers of the public? If they are brief and under two minutes, you're welcome. I'm not kidding, under two minutes, please come to the table and the microphone and re-identify yourself.
Good grief.
You're a trooper, Bridget.
Three years. Three committees, three years, I just want to remind you. So, I, my question only, is only what, who's gonna come up with the plan and design? I've been communicating a little bit with Chris about the original, George connected me with, with a shade sale producer, and I was the one who did all that, and then all of a sudden, there was a landscape designer, and that went up in the air, and so, I've sent Chris the, the original shade sale designs. If I'm right, and I'm, I can't remember exactly, it was between fifteen and seventeen thousand dollars to install the shade sales, it's more complicated in a municipality than it is in your home. You can go and buy these things for, but they have to be taken down, put up, taken down, it's, it's an industrial, you know, quality sale, and that's what we would want, to be honest, because we don't want to struggle with this, right? If I could wave a magic wand in that park right now, I would, I would probably do something about the surface, but that would be, but remediation probably isn't needed, that's something we discovered in committee two, but, but, you know, something at, on the surface, maybe to make it smoother, but I don't really, that's my last priority. I would do shade sales, because people asked in our informal survey for shade, and that's the one thing we haven't been, been able to provide. We got tables and benches from EJRP, we got the, those cement thingies that Nick and I planted last week from EJRP, because they were, they were getting rid of them. I, it would be great to get planters with a water reservoir, if, if that's possible, because we have two people from, from the community who are watering twice a week, and that's great, but wouldn't it be great to just not have to do that? So, some, some kind of shade, however we provide it, and I think the tree committee has weighed in, they don't think trees are appropriate there, so, great. So shade sales, yes, I mean, something like that, and maybe something with the surface if we can do it, and, and maybe some better planters. And that is a minimal, in my, in my opinion, that's what needs to be done, and it's a minimal process. My question is, who's coming up with this now? Where are we in the, who will, who will provide the, the plan for this?
I mean, the thinking is, we would go back to the landscape architect with this direction and...
Okay. You know, the, the, the process has been, has been, hasn't been great, as, I've talked about that before, you, you don't go out for a, for a, for something like that and not give somebody parameters, you just don't say, because here's where we are, we're at, what is it, six hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and we can't afford that. So, then you, it gets dropped, right? It's whoop, okay, done. Instead of saying, we have this two hundred thousand dollars, and I think that, to be honest with you, I think that the committee, the, the people that stuck with it for three years, probably could come up with a pretty, with Chris's, you know, help, a, a pretty good plan in about a week. You know, we can do it. If you want the community to be involved, this is the way to do it.
Yeah. Well, I want the community involved, but I want to make sure that we've gone out then and asked people we don't normally see on the committee, so I'd want to make sure we're, and who was on the committee again?
I don't know, I mean, it was, it, we've been, there's been three iter, I was, there's three iterations of the committee, and it was, the last one was Rick Hamlin, Harlan, myself, Nick, because at that point, we thought trees, but, that, I'm trying to remember. Elaine, you came over the first time we met with George, I mean, you know, they're, everybody's done this, but I'm trying to think of who else was on that committee, the landscape designer, David, and was there anyone else? Maybe Rick Jones from Public Works? But I think those were the people who were on it. And we did, we did that informal survey, we know what people want, it's not, that's not a question, at all, in my, in my mind, anyway.
I guess I'd reach out, Regina, to the, I'm sorry, Bridget, is there anything else?
No.
Okay, thank you so much.
Yep.
Thanks, Bridget.
Thanks, Bridget.
I guess I'd reach out to the landscape architect and get a bead on, get a reaction, see what they think. I, I mean, I, I appreciate the folks that were involved before, and I think there's been various efforts to push this through quickly or not in past years, while we were wrapped up with a lot of other things, so I don't necessarily think that that's an entirely representative group of the community, although they are the ones that keep showing up, which is so incredibly important.
Well, can we, Bridget, the, so, the survey that you referred to, are the results to that somewhere, just so we can see what they were, and how many people responded?
Sure.
I think the charrette that Robin had, had under a dozen people.
No, this was online.
It wasn't, it wasn't really a charrette.
Yeah, this was online, there are quite a few people that weighed in.
All right. Yeah, let's get a bead on the, on what Ginkgo says, or that is a landscape designer, and, I mean, I'm looking at the original cost sheet below the, you know, on page ninety, and there can be quite a bit down here, without touching the surface, for that money. And I think, looking at the requests from the survey for what's important to people, I think barrier to the roadways was important, for one thing, so. So I would entertain motion, sounds like option two is the way we're going. In fact, I'll just say it. I move the council authorize city staff to resume work on the Main Street Park with a lower cost design as discussed.
Second.
Great. Going back to Zoom, so I can see, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously, thank you. Excellent. Bridget, stay tuned.
I'm on my grave.
I know you do, I know you do. Well, it might be in that park.
We're gonna put a shade sale over it. Call it Meyer Park.
Yeah, Meyer Park, oh, but we can't, but we can't talk about that right now. Health officer appointment, we're getting there.
Okay. So, as you folks may recall, when we did the FY twenty-five budget, which will start on July one, twenty twenty-four, we switched from health officer position being wrapped up into the full-time concept of code enforcement rental registry health officer position, and moved the health officer work into the fire department. So this recommendation is to recommend to the Department of Health, because the city council does not make this decision your own, actually, you're making this recommendation to the Department of Health for John Roell to be the health officer for the city. And we have, for quite a long time, had a reciprocal relationship with the town, where the health officer for the town is the deputy for the city, and the city's health officer is the deputy for the town. Both parties are open to that, and it's, we don't exchange co, money for that, we have just been able to do that.
Okay. Does that make sense for everyone?
Yep.
Marcus?
Quick question. The relationship between the town and the city on this one, because it's mentioned in the memo that their health officer is our deputy, is that going to be vice versa the other way as well?
Yep.
All right, I just wanted to make sure I was clear on that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, well, without further discussion...
I'll move that the city council make a recommendation to the Department of Health to appoint John Roell to the position of health officer for the city.
Second.
Great. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Motion passes unanimously, excellent. And we have five H, which was the, which is the tax sale policy and liquid tax policy. Consent agenda, I'm going to ask, or do you want to say anything to those?
Yeah, so, one of the new, many new bills that came out of legislature this year does have some changes to tax sale policy, so we just want to take some time to make sure what we've got is in line with the new legislation, and so, we can bring that back to you when we've got that sorted out. I don't know if we will be able to do that for your very next meeting, but we can bring it back when, when we've got that done. And the delinquent tax policy, the two can be done together, we're not necessarily doing anything different on the delinquent side based on stats, state statute changes, but we can bring the two together when we've got that sorted out.
Excellent. Any questions about that? I'm going to ask that we table that item at this point.
Great.
Excellent. All right, that is the business items.
Can I just ask a quick, slightly related question?
Sure.
Sometime down the road, next month, I don't know, could we have a legislative recap?
Why don't you say that?
Because, yeah, there's a lot that happened, the ethics bill, the cannabis bill, there's a lot that we're gonna have to deal with.
We talked about that yesterday, so hopefully, whatever meeting is after the veto session, we have guidance on like, what's actually happening.
That's true, yeah.
I will point, though, just to keep going, you should have all, and if you haven't, just let me know, or let Regina know, and she can get you signed up, but VLCT have put out one or two wrap-ups that are excellent. They're not a hundred percent complete, there was a couple of things that weren't included, but if you follow the links to the bills, you can see them.
Yep.
Really summarizing what was done, and there is a lot that I think is there to talk about for us.
There's forty-four bills today that they have summarized.
Yeah.
In their wrap-up.
And, you know, ethics, cannabis, on and on and on, that we should all be aware of. So anyway, we'll talk about that in next month and a half.
That'd be great.
Excellent. I will move to approve the consent agenda, as amended.
Second.
Great, all those in favor say aye.
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 Passes unanimously.
Could I, just, can I mention one thing?
Yep.
So, in the consent agenda, you saw the block party, thank you all for having voted and approved that, that block party happens to be a block that I live on, and as a resident of that particular block, I want to invite the city council to come visit our little block party.
When is that?
So, it's coming up on, oh, man, you have...
It's in the packet.
It's in the, it's in the packet.
I just sat down.
I couldn't tell you, I couldn't tell you either.
Yeah, a couple of weeks, just kidding. But it's, it's a great time, I gotta, you know, hats off to my neighbors who just do a great job of coming out, setting up little tents, and so we kind of walk from neighbor to neighbor, you know, from neighbor to neighbor, you know, food on the grills and games with the kids, you know, it's, it's a great time, and I think it's a great example of what I would love to see just more of around the community, so.
And so people know, anybody can do this, what it requires is that, if you pick a section of your street, as I understand it, you need to get all of the folks that live on that street to sign an attestation, a petition, basically, that says they don't mind the street being closed from X to, X to Y time.
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
And preferably, it's a street that is more of a cul-de-sac, or more of a den, as opposed to the only access to a neighborhood.
Right.
Yeah. Luckily enough, we have a road that kind of bypasses, so people can still get to and from, and we will, you know, we have it, while it blocks off only the, the portion from West Street down to...
Yes.
Winona.
Owas, Wissa, Owasty?
Yeah, anyway.
Yeah, Owasty.
That first, that, that, those first, yeah, that first block, we invite the whole Hiawatha, and even those from South Hiawatha, otherwise known as Nama, so...
Even the Nama people.
Yeah, the first year, I got a card left in my screen door that said I was invited, so, I guess gonna, now I'm officially invited.
It's awesome, it's a great time.
Okay.
Any manager comments?
So, just so folks know, our ladder truck was picked up last Wednesday, and it got to the production facility in Wisconsin, and then moved to the repair facility on Monday morning, so, we're gonna be working on establishing a contact at the repair facility itself, so we can keep up to date on that process, and hopefully, it goes quickly. Just want to reiterate that all of our businesses are open here in the Village City, even though the Crescent Connector project is happening, and it's inconvenient, so thanks to everybody for their patience through that construction project. Hopefully, curbs will be coming for Maple Street on Monday, it's, it's a more challenging process to get the curbs folks to show up than everybody likes, so it is subject to change, but hopefully Monday.
Excuse me. Great. Do you have any, anybody, Amber, do you have anything to share?
I'm all set, thanks.
All right.
I have something for the reading file.
Okay. Go for it.
So, in the reading file, I just want to acknowledge, looking at the bike walk minutes, I, there was a couple of things that confused me about this, because again, I think in reading these minutes, I'm not sure that I understand the conversations that were being had, generally speaking. There is a line in here concerning public to be heard with names mentioned, but I do not see then what those public comments were. And again, as I look in these to help get an idea of what is being discussed, what ideas are coming from the committee, what ideas are coming from the community, for our own priorities and our own discussions, I'm not sure that I, I felt like I was getting enough out of these minutes to really understand the conversations that were being had.
Got it.
All right. Well, if there's nothing else, I'll entertain a motion adjourned.
So moved.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Amber, say aye, Amber. So, do a roll call, Amber. Three, two...
Sorry, guys.
You say aye.
Yeah, aye.
Just under the wire.
All right.
I'm here.
Good luck with that.
Thanks, bye, guys.
Bye.
Bye, Amber.